I don't think our mics are on yet.
No, I think we're good. Before we get started, Councilmember Parkers, can you hear us? It looks like no.
We can't hear.
And we can't hear him. Madam City Clerk, do we need an oral yes by Councilmember Parkers for attendance? Or can he, do we have to wait for the audio?
No, if we can mark him as, if he can give me a hand gesture to let me know that he's here, that he's listening, then we can proceed.
He can't hear.
He can't, I don't think he can hear us, but we can gesture to him, okay. Yeah, I think we need to wait.
Yeah, if he can't hear us or participate, then we should wait.
So again, thanks for your patience here. We do have a council member who is, has COVID, so he's at home. And he is joining us remotely, so we're waiting for him to have audio. And once he has audio, we can proceed with the meeting, thank you.
I can hear you now.
Great, and we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Sierra Madre City Council. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor Edward Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Kelly Krebs.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Lowe.
Present.
And Councilmember Robert Parkers participating remotely. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum this evening.
Thank you. And tonight's inspiration and Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Councilmember Parkers. And he has invited Troop One Ten B and Troop One Ten G, both boys and girls, to present the colors today. So I'm going to turn it over to Troop One Ten and then over to Councilmember Parkers for the colors.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Color guard, forward march. Right on, halt. Color guard, about pace. Uh, please repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, close to colors. Color guard, reform. Audience, unity. Color guard, repeat. Yep, unity. Thank you very much, Troop One Ten. I really appreciate you guys being here tonight and presenting the colors. Um, for my inspiration tonight, I wanted to reflect a little bit on Veterans Day, which happened just this past weekend. And there's an interesting history behind it. And most people know that Veterans Day was in response to World War Two. It's kind of its origin is the signing of the armistice on the eleventh of November, so eleven, eleven, and eleven o'clock. But there's another link to it that I learned today, and that is about the Unknown Soldier. And so on November eleventh of nineteen twenty-one, the first Unknown Soldier was placed on a horse-drawn carriage. It carried through Washington, D.C., and across the Potomac River. And a state funeral ceremony was held at Arlington National Cemetery at its new memorial amphitheater. And the Unknown Soldier was interned there, and then in the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And at that time, Americans observed two minutes of silence at the beginning of the ceremony. And so we see this continuing to this day, the Unknown Soldier, not just in the U.S., but in other places. And not just from World War One, but in all the wars prior to that and in all the wars succeeding. Veterans Day was officially recognized by Congress in nineteen twenty-six, at the end of World War One. And what I found particularly interesting in looking at that and really reminisce of what's going on today was part of the resolution that Congress adopted on June fourth, nineteen twenty-six. And the portion of it that was particularly fitting to me goes like this, it says, "Whereas it is fitting that the recurring anniversary, god anniversary of this day should be commemorated with Thanksgiving and prayer, an exercise designed to perpetuate peace through goodwill and mutual understanding between nations." So while this is almost a hundred years ago, resolution, as I said, resonates very much to me, both as we prepare for the Thanksgiving holiday and witness the challenges and even the atrocities going on in the Israel and Gaza region. And so I ask everyone, I ask all my fellow Sierra Madreans to consider ways in which we all can, in the words of the resolution, perpetuate peace through goodwill and mutual understanding, not just between nations, but between each other, between our neighbors within Sierra Madre, between our neighbors within other cities, within other states, and within other nations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers, for that bit of history and inspiration. So moving on to the agenda, thank you, Troop One Ten, for being here as well. Moving on to the agenda, can we get a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented? Unless anybody wants to move anything out of the consent calendar? Move anything around? Thank you, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. And City Attorney Girgozine, can you please report out from our closed session meeting?
Mayor, the city council met in closed session to discuss one case under the anticipated litigation exception under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine subdivision D two. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Moving on, I'd look to hear a motion, or would somebody like to give us a motion for approval of reading of resolutions and ordinances by title only?
I move that we read ordinances and resolutions by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. All right, moving on to the minutes from October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, did you receive any requests for substantive changes? And also an opportunity for us at the DAAS to present any changes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Clerk's office did not receive any recommended changes or edits to the minutes.
Anything from us up here? No? Okay.
Move to document, minutes is ready.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to Mayor and City Council reports. Councilmember Parkers, do you want to start, since you're remote? And then we'll come up here after that?
Thank you very much. And just so people know that the reason tonight I am remote is because I tested positive with COVID. And so per the state's recommendations, I am isolated for five days. And so, um, for my city report, on October twenty-eighth was a really busy day. We had ribbon cutting at the pharmacy, the Pax Pharmacy. And I was there with Councilmember Krebs. It was a delightful day, really energetic, local that has bought the pharmacy and I think is going to be in really good hands. Later that day, we had a session with Athens up at the search and rescue building about living with wildlife and the new bear containers. And there were, Councilmember Well, many of his staff, people joined us at that. It was really informative event. And then following that, the Historical Preservation Society had a cemetery tour. And it was absolutely fascinating. We learned a lot about the history of Sierra Madre that I didn't already know, where people in period costumes representing various historical figures that are buried there in the cemetery. November second, I had, there were two events there. The Clean Power Alliance Board of Directors, we had some excitement there. We approved a fifteen-year power purchase agreement with Patterson Energy and for five hundred and seventy-five megawatts of wind power. Put that in perspective, that's enough to power two hundred and sixty-five thousand homes in Southern California. And this project is historic in size, at three point five gigawatts. It has a capacity fifty percent greater than the Hoover Dam and produces nearly triple the annual power of the Hoover Dam. Together with this transmission line, it's an eight billion dollar project that has taken close to two decades to get through. And we are buying sixteen percent of its overall capacity here in Southern California. Also on the second, the senior commission held its meeting. They've got some exciting things going on. They've got the senior holiday lunch, which will happen on December thirteenth from noon to two at Hart House. And Bethany School will be providing entertainment, and Ann Oss is going to cater it. And there'll be a raffle held with a bunch of favors for everybody. The senior lunch program is going to be up and running, hopefully very soon. They said this month, so hopefully that'll be up and running any day now. They've had two bus tours, where they had one and they're having one. Their last one to Rogers Garden was full, forty-seven people. And their December bus tour is going to go to Rubles Castle in Landora on December twelfth. And they'll have lunch in Old Town Landora. So the day has been very, very active. And then finally, on November eleventh, I know other people will talk about this as well. We had the car show here in Sierra Madre, it was incredible. Lots of just incredible vehicles brought in. Shops were really busy, restaurants were really busy. The fire department did a phenomenal job organizing it, making these stunning awards for the vehicles. It was just a delightful day by all. And then right after that, there was the Historical Preservation Society had a tour of Ewaldo War, which was equally really interesting. We got to go inside and see the bottling of a preserved encounter. And with that, I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkers. I can see why maybe you're tired. You had a lot to do, so. All right, anybody else like to share? Yes, please, Councilmember Goss.
Just a couple of things. Last Monday, City Manager Reynoso and myself traveled to PUSD headquarters and met with the facilities director for the district. We met to discuss a plan to open our Sierra Madre Middle School up on weekday afternoons and evenings and on Saturdays for our youth to avail the gym for their variety of programs. We also proposed that the YMCA, who now handles our youth programming, take this over as a consequence. And that we would have free gym time for our kids of different ages during these times. And we'd also have basketball leagues, probably on Saturday, for different age groups, including adults. Obviously, this is a game changer. We've never done this here in Sierra Madre. So I'm really happy to report that we agreed in principle with the PUSD facilities director. We have received encouragement from the superintendent and from Board Member Fredericks, who represents us here in the Sierra Madre area. So where we left it is our staff is working, along with YMCA, on a more detailed plan. We're anticipating a lunch meeting in about a week to a week and a half to try to come to an agreement on those details before we can come to a decision and get this to the superintendent and to the board for their view, for their vote for PUSD. But right now, it's very promising. I've been hacking away at this for years, and we're finally getting real close to something happening. So very pleased to report this. Also, I attended that car show on Saturday. Wow, was it a crazy car show, just incredible cars there. I want to congratulate the mayor on his taste. I would have picked that Bronco, too, as the mayor's award. But it was just a wonderful event, beautiful day, just classic Sierra Madre Saturday morning. That's all we got.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Councilmember Lowe?
So just to repeat, I attended the October twenty-eighth Living with Wildlife, the Athens presentation up at the Sierra Madre Search and Rescue, which if you've never visited, you should check it out. It's pretty phenomenal, and there are a phenomenal group of volunteers. A lot of information was given out. I know there's a lot of confusion still, but we're working on trying to get the information out for everyone on how the compostables separates and how the bear cans work and whether you need the same size or smaller, and also what's happening in the canyon. So that information is starting to come out more and more as we figure it out and see what errors we have. And it reminds me of when we changed over to separating our recyclables. There's that same type of confusion. So I appreciate that there's so many questions, and everyone's helping each other. So neighbors are helping neighbors figure everything out. On October thirty-first, it was the Downtown Halloween Happenings. It was fantastic, some of the best costumes I've ever seen. Also, a lot of kids all over the streets going trick-or-treating from business to business. Our downtown district was finished just in time. Thank you so much to our Public Works and our planning and Director Samino. And also, the parade going down the street was fantastic, so that was fun. On November second, we had a planning commission meeting, and a lot was accomplished. And there was good discussions from the public, as well as from the commissioners, and questions asked. And they will be continuing on with some more information about Alverno's Villa CUP. So attend that meeting if you have some say you would like to in that meeting. November sixth was the end of the Chamber of Commerce meeting, the end of the year meeting. And they're really looking for new membership. They've been doing an amazing job at having mixers at least once a month. The next mixer will be this November sixteenth at the Sierra Madre Playhouse from five to seven P.M. We're really encouraging businesses to come and join, and they're also looking for new board members. So if you really are looking for some leadership roles in our city and our business district and as well as businesses around town, it could be a business that's set in Sierra Madre or a home business is fine, too. So please reach out to the chamber for that, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. Mayor Pro Tem?
We're all busy, busy. So since the last meeting, yes, I also attended the ribbon cutting at the new Pax Pharmacy. And I have to say that I'd not seen downtown Sierra Madre that busy on a Saturday in many, many months. And so it was really exciting, not just for the ribbon cutting, obviously, although that was well-attended. But it was just a beautiful day, and there were just people out and about and, you know, coming into downtown, and the stores and the restaurants were all very busy and for no particular, you know, reason, so that was great. And then, yes, also attended some of our Halloween Happenings. Appreciate all of the hard work that our community services staff put into that event. I mean, that's always a favorite. Spent some time on Allegria, and I want to congratulate all of those residents on yet another amazing effort to, you know, really, you know, it puts us on the map, which, you know, maybe is good or bad, depending on your point of view. But certainly, it's something that all of our residents enjoy. And it was just another really, really well-done year, and just so impressed with the creativity and work that goes into that. I was celebrating my new bear can at the end of that week. It arrived, it showed up, I took my other one, it was all very smooth. I know that wasn't everybody's experience, and so to Councilmember Lowe's point, there is still, you know, if you have questions about, maybe you didn't get your can, maybe they took too many cans away, your can's too big, you know, definitely call Athens. I know that they're expecting a transition period. One thing I think on communication is that we've obviously emphasized the wildlife aspect of the new bear can, maybe to the detriment of the fact that all of this came about because of the state mandate for separating our trash. So while the bear can is a, you know, an extra benefit and maybe will help curb some of the food sources for our bears, it's really primarily to facilitate this need to separate all of the organics, yard waste, food waste, you know, separate from the trash waste in your black can. And so I think some of that might have gotten a little lost, and so hopefully folks are sorting through that, no pun intended. And then also attended the car show. Just another beautiful Saturday with the town full of people, and the cars were amazing. I really want to congratulate the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association for putting on really an amazing event that brought a lot of people into town, hopefully some new folks who had discovered our town for the first time, bringing their car here. And both that and the Halloween parade just highlighted how great a job our Public Works Department and our contractor did on the street project on the Boulevard. I mean, it looks amazing, it happened, from what I can tell, in record time. And I know that there was some disruption, but I feel like that was kept to a minimum. So I feel like that was a really successful project, and I really wanted to congratulate the Public Works Department for managing that in such a great way and meeting that deadline so we could have all of our public events this last couple of weeks. And lastly, this morning, I attended the Rotary meeting, and they had Supervisor Barker in attendance to give a little bit of an update. She primarily spoke about the county's efforts and her efforts to combat homelessness. And it was really interesting to hear, she's really trying to solve the problem at all levels, you know, from a National Committee on Mental Health, all the way down to obviously providing more housing in our local areas. So that was really great, and thanks to the Rotary for inviting us. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So the end of last month, I also attended a ribbon cutting that was for GH Wilkie Jewelers on Montecito Avenue. That, they're nearly a hundred years old, and so they're planning on having their centennial anniversary here in the town of Sierra Madre, which is great. One of the owners is a resident here in Sierra Madre. And we were joined by not only our Chamber of Commerce, but Arcadia Chamber of Commerce came along, too, as well as Arcadia's mayor, April Verlato, and she was gushing about our city. So it was nice to have our neighbors, who we are friendly with, there as well. On October twenty-fifth, I attended the sanitation district meeting at the L.A. Sanitation District head offices. Really nothing to report out there. Used to be they were checking influenza and COVID throughout the system. That's not really an issue right now, but they do continue to find ways to reuse the wastewater, create electricity with some of the slurry that's in the wastewater, and also do some mulch and put together some fertilizer for a farm up in the Central Valley. So that continues. I also did attend the Halloween Happenings downtown, it was great. The Community Services Department did an amazing job. We had the Sierra Madre Dance Company put on a little show, and it was great. Got to see my eight-year-old daughter doing her hip hop on stage. But it was very well-attended, so was the Halloween Happenings and the parade. And I do live one block south of Allegria, and I was busy at home handing out, I think, about a thousand pieces of candy. But I heard the excitement on Allegria, and I had reports back that it was another wonderful, wonderful celebration up there. And a lot of the residents and non-residents came up and really had a good time. And they keep upping their game up there. So thank you to those residents for really coming together as community and making that a great time here in Sierra Madre, one of the things we're known for. On November seventh, last Tuesday, myself, along with City Manager Reynoso, went down to Arcadia to the U.S. Forest Service offices and met with Under Secretary of the USDA, Dr. Wilks. And the conversation, it was a very small meeting, but the conversation was around stakeholders against the mountains. Because if you don't know, there is a bill that's being put forth by by Representative Judy Chu, our representative, and also I think Senator Padilla, they want to make the entire mountains a national monument. As you know, the eastern side of the mountains are national monuments, and they want to continue it throughout the whole of the San Gabriel Valley Mountains. If you look at the map, Sierra Madre does own some property going up the Mount Wilson Trail, so there's a little section that won't be part of the monument just north of us. I think it's the only kind of blank spot on that map. But I found it important to be there, and I think it was only myself and one other mayor, and then some out-of-town council members, the mayor from Alverno was there as well, to make sure that our community interests were being upheld, things such as water, our water rights, want to make sure they heard loud and clear, we don't want any changes to our water rights, we want to make sure that we're being considered effectively for wildfire abatement issues, and also any wildlife issues. We wanted to make sure, since we've began a new dialogue with the Department of Fish and Wildlife of the State of California, that that continues rather than having the federal department there. So everything that we heard and everything we said, I actually spent a lot of time talking during that meeting, they heard us loud and clear in Washington, and they know that our residents and our communities want to, we want to make sure that we're represented however this monument spreads throughout our region. Also, on the 12th, I did attend the car show, I think all of us were there, most of us, you were not there, I'm sorry, but... But it was a great day, the weather couldn't have been better, it was a nice, clear day. I just want to thank the Veterans of Foreign War for presenting the colors in the morning. They did an amazing job there, and also the Sierra Madre Professional Firefighters Association, they really did a wonderful job. They had to jump through all the hoops and pull all the permits and do everything, get everybody signed up. I believe there was 102 cars, a huge increase from, I think, 60 the year before, and then the previous iteration was somewhere in the 30-car range. So it's really becoming something special, and what I did notice, there were more and more residents with their cars there as well. And I did get to, if you know, if you see me around town in my 2022 Ford Bronco, it's really envy of the late '60s and early '70s Broncos, that's what I would prefer to have, but I just can't afford that. So I was able to award the Mayor's Trophy to a 1968 Bronco, who I found out was built by our city manager's brother. So that was an interesting, fun fact. It was beautiful, I don't know if you saw that car. But once again, thank you for the community showing up, thank you for the Fire Department really continuing to galvanize this community with all these community events, so I'm very, very grateful for that. And also, this morning, I did attend with some staff and also with Mayor Protem, the Rotary Meeting with Supervisor Barker, and yeah, she did lay out some issues regarding the unhoused and homelessness issue, and she is trying to take an approach that hits on all levels, addiction, mental health, and housing numbers. So everything is there, she's taking it seriously, and I think that was an interesting meeting. We don't really have that issue here in Sierra Madre, but it is a human issue, and I think all of us should be involved in that conversation, so it was nice to have our supervisor here giving us an update on that. And with that, I'd like to move on to city announcements, and then we'll get to presentations. Actually, we'll get to public comment, and then we'll get to the presentations. As far as the city announcements and events, the Sierra Madre Community Services will be hosting Fall Fun Bingo at the Hart House this Thursday, the 16th, from 12:30 to 2:30. It costs $7, and that includes the bingo games, a light lunch, and prizes. The Senior Lunch Program is returning to the Hart Park House starting November 29th with a $3 suggested donation. Please call 355-5278 to reserve your spot. Also, please join Friends of the Library for their Snowflake Celebration that will include fun, food, crafts, prizes, and special appearances by the Snowflake Princess. This will be at the Hart Park House on December 2nd from 5:30 to 8:00. This was a great event, I think the first one was last year, and I attended last year. Hats off to the Friends of the Library for thinking outside the box and trying to have different types of events that welcome the youth and family, and it was a great event, it was well-attended, and hopefully they raise some funds for our library. And finally, don't miss out on the Chamber of Commerce Winter Festival by shopping Small Business Saturday on November 25th from noon to 8:00, which will include crafters, snow, Santa, elves, and more. So that's our big weekend celebration after Thanksgiving, so I hope to see all of you down there. And with that, that concludes my report and remarks. Moving on to public comment for items not on the agenda, I'm going to quickly read through the Public Participation Code of Conduct, all paraphrased. Your participation is welcome and encouraged. If you disrupt the meeting, I will kindly ask you to not disrupt the meeting, and if you continue, I'll kindly have to ask you to leave. No large signs that will be disruptive to the meeting, obviously signs are okay as long as they're not disrupting the orderly conduct of the City Council. But with that, I'd like to open up the lectern to items not on the agenda for public comment. Make sure you fill out a yellow comment card in the back and bring it to our city clerk. And with that, Madam City Clerk, do we have any yellow cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two speaker cards that were submitted, and we also have one speaker in the queue, and the city clerk's office did not receive any emails for items not on the agenda. The first speaker this evening is Joel Goodwin.
Well, good evening, Mayor Garcia, and members of our State Council. I'm just here to commend all you guys on a job well done in name of air-resistant trash cans. Makes me so happy that the city is finally done this, makes me feel so much safer. I've had a couple coast calls in my neighborhood, but nothing dangerous yet, I hope not to, but just want to commend you guys and say thank you for what you guys have done, it's really great.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is David Gordon.
Good evening, David Gordon, Sierra Madre Playhouse. First of all, I'd like to thank Chris Samino and the Department of Public Works, part of beautification project. They have built a beautiful wall right outside the playhouse, which will make it really convenient when we have events, create that really good space. Thank you very much indeed. So, last Friday, we announced our new program for the year as we transition into being a performing arts center, not just a playhouse. And I don't know how much I'm going to get through in 2 minutes and 31 seconds, but here goes. So, we have our Christmas show of Corey Cable Kidder coming back to the playhouse, doing a kind of USO kind of show, starting on the day after Thanksgiving. Starting next year, we have a rather tough play called Confessions of a Prairie Bitch. It is about a woman who makes, who has to confront the fact that she was abused as a child, but she is a comedian, and so she makes this into a very moving, but yes, funny, but yet tragic sort of performance. On February the 2nd, we are going to have a weekend of silent films to celebrate our 100th anniversary. The Wisteria Theater opened as a movie theater on February the 2nd, 1924, so we're having a weekend of great 1924 classics, including Buster Keaton and Susan Davis and many stars of that time. The ticket charge will be $19.24. $19.24.
I get it, I get it.
I get it. Okay, so then, the next thing we have is a Taiko project, the Taiko Drummers are coming to the Sierra Madre Playhouse. The following day, we are starting a new series of jazz, and Greg Pore, the famous jazz guitarist, is leading that off and will be curating a series of jazz performances. We're then, the following weekend, having Hindustani classical music with a well-known group. The following day, yet another jazz performance. We're having comedy, we're bringing IP comedy into the playhouse and starting on the 24th of February with Subha Agawal, who's going to be doing that. Then we're starting a series of classical music with a group called Tesarai who do Baroque music. And I've only just got to the beginning of March, but I only have 12 seconds, so I advise everybody to go to the website and see the amazing things that we're doing. Many more performances, bringing people to the downtown of Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Mayor, we have no additional speaker cards. We did have a member of the public in the queue who has now dropped off, so we have no other speakers.
Okay, I do see two chat bubbles, but that's not something we're concerned with?
Our IT Department has indicated that we don't have anyone in the chat room.
Great, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so moving on to our first presentation of the evening, and this is how the meeting will go, I will do this first presentation, and then I'll entertain about a 10-minute recess, because I know that some of you don't, as much as you would like to hear our city business throughout the rest of the evening, you'd probably want to get going because you're here for a certain reason. So I want to make sure that you get that opportunity. Thank you. And so the first presentation is going to be a recognition of our Public Works Director, Chris Samino, and his retirement after 37 years of service. I do want to mention that I see that former Mayor John Capocha is here, and I did see former Mayor John Harabedian somewhere, he may be hiding out there, but it's great to have you back here for this opportunity to congratulate Director Samino. And with that, I'd like to invite, do we have somebody from Judy Chu's office here for the presentation? Nope, okay. Somebody remember Holden's office?
I think they all sent...
They sent certificates, okay. And I do have, I do have the Senate and the county, so anybody from other offices here before I jump up? Okay. So I'm going to come up to the lectern, and I'd like to invite Chris down, sorry, Director Samino down to join me. And I do want to mention that Bruce Inman, the former Director of Public Works, is here as well. Good to see you, Bruce. Okay, I do have some prepared remarks, then I'll let you talk if you want to, Chris. This feels like one of the... Stand next to me here. So Christopher Samino has dedicated the last 37 years to provide outstanding community service to the residents of Sierra Madre. Mr. Samino started his career on June 17th, 1986, as a maintenance man. Wasn't long until he was transferred to the Water Department as a meter reader and a pump operator. While going to school to learn more about the water industry, he learned there would be more opportunities if he continued all aspects of public works. He took courses at Citrus College, LA Trade Tech, and USC to advance his career. Fight on. He took courses, he, sorry, he worked from the maintenance man to plant operator, pump operator, water foreman, public works supervisor, water department superintendent, deputy director of public works, and finally became the director of public works in 2017. While doing all of this, he and his wife raised their three children here in Sierra Madre. During his tenure with the city, he was a part of many innovative impactful projects, just to name a few, the advanced technology SCADA system, if you've seen that, it's an amazing system, the APWA award-winning Grove Reservoir with the innovation of a tank within a tank concept, rebuilding of the Miramonte Pumping Station and two reservoirs. Over the years, he has overseen the installation of over 25 miles of water main, 25 miles of water main, and rehabilitated over 20 miles of street and sidewalk, and we witnessed some of that downtown this year. The remodeling of the recreation center and the pool more than once, the remodel of City Hall and Council Chambers. He is the most proud of the, he is most proud of the project management he performed for the community, like the Kirsten Court rehabilitation and the downtown sidewalk enhancement, water main replacement and street project that he just completed. And we do appreciate that, that is a very outward-looking part of our community, and we're forever grateful for that. So, Chris, I'm going to read this, it's going to take a little while, and then I'll hand you the other ones as well, but this is, yeah, there's a lot of ink, it's a little heavy. So this is a certificate of recognition to you, Chris, the Director of Public Works. Whereas Christopher Samino was born and raised in the city of Sierra Madre, he began his career with, there'll be a little bit of repeating here, but it's worth saying twice, maintenance of June 17th, 1986. His professional trajectory saw him rise from park maintenance to various roles, including plant operator all the way through to the Director of Public Works, culminating in 2017. For the past 37 years, Chris has devoted his career to delivering this exceptional community service to the residents of Sierra Madre. Throughout his journey, he and his wife successfully raised their three children here in Sierra Madre, whereas Chris played a pivotal role in numerous innovative and impactful projects during his tenure here with the city, with those notable achievements that I had mentioned earlier. Whereas his contributions extended to the remodeling of the recreation center and pool, the renovation of City Hall and the Council Chambers that we're in tonight, and successful project management for community initiatives such as our wonderful Kirsten Court rehabilitation and downtown sidewalk enhancement, as well as the water main replacement and street projects that were recently completed. Source of immense pride for Chris. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Sierra Madre does hereby commend with great appreciation Director Chris Samino for his dedication and service to the community of Sierra Madre, presented this 14th day of November 2023 by the City Council of the city of Sierra Madre, Mayor Edward Garcia, Mayor Protem Kelly Crebs, Council Members Gene Goss, Council Member Chris Lowe, and Council Member Robert Parkhurst. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we also, I'm not going to read on on this, but we do have a certificate of recognition from Anthony Portantino, our state senator, for your 37 years of dedicated service. And also, the county always has these beautiful, beautiful certificates. Catherine Barker, our supervisor, also wants to commend you for your numerous contributions for the benefit of the residents of Los Angeles County. Thank you, Chris. And if you'd like to say a few words, come on up. Round of applause.
Yo, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protem, Kelly Crebs, Council Members Lowe, Council Member Goss, and Council Member Parkhurst. Thanks for having me tonight. I'd like to also thank City Manager Reynoso, City Attorney Garagosian, and City Clerk Aguilar for having me. Can I turn around and talk to the things? Sideways. It's an honor to be recognized by the city's leadership and by our county and state representatives. I would like to introduce my wife Pamela, daughter Lauren, and sons Ryan and Wyatt, my mom Judy, and mother-in-law Sylvia, both here also, and then all of our friends here tonight, thank you for all your coming. I'd like to recognize all the city staff in attendance, I am forever grateful for your support tonight and our residents, and thank you for coming. Thank you for giving me this special place to work for 37-plus years with so many incredible, rewarding career opportunities. I look forward to the future of Sierra Madre from a resident standpoint, which will be different, difficult, and exciting at the same time. I'm incredibly fortunate to have worked and lived in my hometown. It's definitely a very unique and special place to call work and home. It's definitely a very unique and special place to call work and home. I've enjoyed working in my community, with my community neighbors, coworkers, and lifelong friends. I started to work with the city of Sierra Madre as a part-time job in the summers during high school. I knew I wasn't the type for the community pool or the recreation center. I knew I was more suited for the outdoors than the weed crew at Public Works. During those summer months, we learned how to work hard and be responsible for the work we performed. The leaders of the Public Works staff were mentors to me. They showed us all the aspects of, of Public Works work. They taught us how to be, to operate equipment, and even how to operate a Pulaski, which is a forestry grubbing hoe. In nineteen eighty-six, Tracy Bealy encouraged the then Public Works Supervisor, Richard Garcia, to hire me. There was one position open in the park maintenance, and he already had someone in mind for that spot. Lucky for me, and eventually for the city, the other park maintenance man put in his notice to move on, so he hired two of us. I'm getting to it. My first duties included maintenance at Memorial Park, City Hall, public safety and, and landscape, the library and the islands at San, or Sierra Madre Boulevard, Michelinda, and at Talbot Park. That's at the top of Lima. Not too many people know that was named Talbot Park. I'm not only performed the landscape maintenance, I was also a janitor for all the buildings of those areas. It was very rewarding to be able to take care of the buildings also, as I was able to learn more about the inner workings of all the departments. After the first couple of years went, went by, I realized the opportunities I would have if I prepared myself to take advantage of the, of the guys who are starting to retire. The rest is history. I wanted to mention a few names of the people who influenced me the most during my tenure here in Public Works. There was shown pictures earlier, and there's a picture of, from nineteen eighty-eight, and I was just a puppy there, and all the guys were there. It was like Tony Cardiell's, I don't know, thirtieth anniversary here with the city. And these are a few of those guys. So Tony Cardiell, who was a great mentor to me, he was the hardest worker. He, he worked up from sunup to sundown and sometimes into the dark of the night. He left the public works yard at three-thirty in the afternoon and went on to do a gardening job or a concrete job, and he brought all of us with him and, and helped us learn other trades after work. Richard Arnold Garcia, the man with the many, many names, he had many, many nicknames. Joe Sanchez, just a legend. Leonard Centiman, George Yamada, they ran the water department back then, and all of us little guys helped out. They were the production and the construction crew. Gilbert and Danny Vasquez, they were the best concrete finishers you could ever find. They, they did a lot of our sidewalks and, and things that are still in, in place today. Danny Rodriguez, as most of you know, is our mechanic. He worked on everything from the lawnmowers to the police cars, fire engines, and, and all of our equipment. Steve Hartwell and George Moran, well, you can learn good things and bad things from, from people, and, and both of them taught me a lot. John Davidson, who was a director of Public Works for a while, became our city manager. He was a great influence. Kev Tarkudian, who I thought was gonna be here tonight, but I still get to work with Kev. He, he's a very good mentor. And then Bruce Enman, who is here tonight. Bruce and I got to work almost twenty years together, was it Bruce?
Yeah.
We did a lot together. We mentioned the Grove Reservoir and Miramonte Reservoirs and all that. That was all during ten's, Bruce's tenure here with the city, with federal funding and some very big projects we got to do. Very rewarding projects. Some of these men have passed away, and a few are here tonight. I appreciate all of you. I wanted to mention their names because they were not only a big part of my development and career, but they contributed to this community for many years, and they deserve to be remembered by all of us. I don't need to go over all the city managers, police chiefs, directors, and staff members over the thirty-seven years. Rich Snyder already did that in his retirement speech. But I will say it was a pleasure working for everyone that has come through this city. I'm incredibly fortunate to have worked every day with the city management, executive staff, city council, the entire city staff, and of course, the community. I have huge respect for all the city employees and community leaders, and I am continuously impressed with their commitment and desire to keep this city the way the residents love this town. As Public Works Director, I had the opportunity to work with every department and all the city staff at one time or another. I hope I made as good of an impression on them as they made on me. To the Public Works crew, I appreciate each and every one of you, past and present, including and not to leave out our yard moms. The yard will always have a special place in my heart. I feel like it was my home away from home for thirty-seven years, plus I lived right next door for a good seven, eight years. You guys are the hardest workers I've ever seen. There's work then, then there's the public works. There's work, then there's the public works. We have huge responsibilities with the operations of the city, from the water, sewer, facilities, fleet, parks, streets, sidewalks, trees, signs, and even event setups. I have always said Public Works is the first on an emergency and the last to leave. You guys will always be my heroes. Jose, I'm extremely proud, proud of your accomplishments. I never thought, when we first met, when you were giving an AMI presentation at the district fourteen years ago, that you would become the city manager. Not that I didn't think you could, no. You're doing a great job for our town, and keep up the good work, and thank you for everything. In closing, thank you to the city council, past and present, for always supporting the city staff. Thank you to all the residents of Sierra Madre. This is not goodbye, and you know I will see you around town. Thank you for everything.
I think we have a representative from Judy Chu's office that walked in. Yeah, come on down, please.
Hi. I'm so sorry I'm late. But we had to come because you made such a big difference to Sierra Madre, and I'm sorry, my name is Miley with Congressman Judy Chu's office, but it's clear that you've made such a big difference in Sierra Madre. They love you here, and I know that they are probably very appreciative that you're still gonna be here in the city. But we had to come because Congressman Judy Chu really wanted to present the certificate of congressional recognition for your thirty-seven years of service. Thank you.
Yeah, so, Chris, if you could stick around, I, I think the council would like a picture with you, and maybe we can have staff come up, and everybody take some pictures together, and then we'll have a ten-minute break, and then we'll resume city business, so. What's that?
Start the break before pictures.
Start the break before pictures? Okay. I'm not a good party planner, I'm sorry. So, let's, let's start that break, and we'll, we'll be on the ten-minute recess, and we'll take some, take some photos up here, so, thank you. So staff, don't go too far.[1141.76]
We didn't have any caffeine this time, so I'm gonna have to stop. I have to go to Palm Springs.
No traffic?
Yes, very true.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I just want, just want to once again say that we're, we're grateful for our hometown boy Chris Amino and his dedication to the city of, for thirty-seven years. Uh, we're, we had Councilmember Barker today talking about the resumes that she sees at her office and think the longest tenure she sees nowadays is something like two years. Um, and, um, you know, we had Captain Snyder earlier and we have, um, we have, we have Chris with thirty-seven years. It's, um, really something to behold and I think a lesson for, for a lot of us about, um, loyalty and, and, um, really loving a community. So, thank you once again, Chris. So, moving on to our, um, our next presentation, uh, this is a presentation of Greener Yards. And I, I'd like to hand it off to, um, City Manager Reynoso to introduce, uh, the presenters.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, today, um, our presenter is Grace Lee. Uh, Grace is a, uh, management intern, uh, in our Public Works Department. Um, very impressed, uh, with Grace. Uh, she graduated from UCSD with an engineering degree in, in three years. Um, and she's currently at Cal State Fullerton working on her master's degree and we're, we're very lucky to have her, um, as an intern in public works. With that, I'll turn it over to Grace.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Garcia. Uh, I'm so excited to be here today to present to you a project that showcases our city's commitment to water conservation, the Sierra Madre Greener Yards Project. This project is a two-phase initiative that will transform our city's landscapes. It not only enhances the aesthetic appeal of our landscapes, but promotes drought tolerance and water conservation. Some community benefits include reduced water usage, lowering water bills, and enhanced property values. So, in phase one of our project, we were focused on developing innovative landscape designs. Um, these designs are not only about making our yards more beautiful, they're about making our yards more resilient in the face of drought water scarcity. We worked with the planning department to come up with five different layout plans based on the most popular housing styles in Sierra Madre. These designs feature beginner-friendly landscaping plans that offer maximum water efficiency and drought resiliency. And with that, I will hand it over to Brianna with California Wild Gardens, who will introduce her designs.
Thank you, Intern Lee.
Thank you, Grace. Um, hello, thank you for having me here tonight to the mayor and board of Sierra Madre and council. I am Brianna Lyon. I am an ecology researcher and a landscape designer and the creator of California Wild Gardens. Um, try out the laser pointer. Behind you, Mayor, here's an example of one of our prototype gardens that won a Golden Arrow Award in Pasadena this year. It's three years of age. Um, and at California Wild Gardens, we're really geared toward making sustainable and beautiful landscaping faster and more readily accessible, specifically to residential homeowners who are facing challenges trying to replace lawns and outdated landscaping as we continue to face water shortages. Uh, about a year ago, I was very excited to hear from Sierra Madre about their vision for their community's landscaping future and wanting to help support their residents in creating better access to that future. So, at California Wild, we have a four kind of tier design method, um, or four components. The first is diversity, which means we use two to three times the number of species of most conventional landscaping design. And that's to promote resilience and higher success rates and extended blooming times, um, for local wildlife and for more beauty. Um, some plants take in soils, others don't, and there's always one or two plants that's a little particular with the way the irrigation's working. So, having that bigger variety really means that the gardens have a better chance of lasting and taking in these newer conditions. Uh, the second component is reflecting nature in the landscape design. We always have at least twenty-five percent native species and we try to keep a density that reflects our wild habitats. Uh, supporting habitat is another really important component and that means we're providing fodder for beneficial insects, pollinators, birds, and also the soil food web, which means the microorganisms in the dirt through certain plants that, um, fix nutrients to their root systems. And even, uh, for humans with a little bit of emergency food shed, even if it's in the form of lavender or lemons or something that doesn't really need a lot of maintenance, but is there. And of course, uh, the initiative behind all of this is to save water. So, there's a few components to water savings beyond just huge reductions in irrigation needs. Also improving soil infiltration in the landscape with plants whose roots break up hardpan and allow water to move deeper into our underground aquifers. Um, and of course, for rebate purposes, having a rainwater harvesting feature or a passive irrigation feature like a gray water distribution system where your washing machine's water goes out into the landscape to water your plants for you. So, here are our resulting designs after a year of hard work between, uh, the help of the planning department and our design team. Um, contemporary really features a big variety of native grasses, succulents, and shapely shrubs to give that really clean look that some homeowners are after. Uh, the Mediterranean style took a big mix of blue foliage plants from Australia, California, the Mediterranean, and then contrasted it with some more colorful native shrubs. Ranch, um, is one of my personal favorites. Instead of lawn, we have a really big mix of deer grass, which is a very ubiquitous native ornamental grass that takes shade, takes full sun, takes very little water or a lot of water, depending on the needs, and mixed in a lot of colorful shrubs in there. Um, the Spanish-style home is the ever-so-popular cactus and succulent garden. Um, this water harvesting feature is built off of, or based on the Ruth Bancroft method. She's a famous yew gardener in Northern California, but you plant onto big mounds of rocks and gravel and DG with dirt on top so that all of those succulents and cactuses get the really great drainage that they need to thrive, especially in years like this one where we had a lot of heavy rainfall that might otherwise drown the plants if they were in, um, compacted soils or low-lying areas. Uh, the craftsman design is really built around year-round color, which is a huge complaint with people with native and drought-tolerant yards. They say, "Oh, it looks terrible half the year. It only flowers part of the year." So, anyways, this one tries to mitigate that with a lot of different foliage colors that last all year and then a bit of flowering in there too, of course, for our beneficial wildlife. All the plans are available free of cost to anyone on the city website as well as on the California Wild Gardens website. Uh, California Wild Gardens also offers distribution. You can buy the plants online by the square foot and, uh, you can also purchase them at any local nursery, of course. Just a quick showcase of what the plans look like. Uh, they're five to six-page documents. I went for a lot of, um, information because some of these plants are new to people. So, just interesting information about how to care for them, what to expect from them, and what they do in the landscape. Every plan also has two different versions, one without lawn at all and then one with a small area of native lawn in there for people who still need that grass functionality in the front yard. And with that, I'll give it back to Grace to discuss plan, or phase two.
Thank you, Brianna. Uh, I'm excited to announce phase two of our project tonight. Um, we, starting in March to May of 2024, we will be launching the plant voucher program. This is strategically timed to align with optimal planting conditions for drought-tolerant species. We understand that conserving water is not only about transforming landscapes, but about giving our residents the means to make these changes effectively. We will be collaborating with a local nursery to offer qualified residents who have the AMI program a $200 voucher. These vouchers can be used to acquire drought-tolerant plants that are in line with the landscape designs mentioned in phase one. Um, on the slide there is a flyer, uh, which we will be distributing during our program marketing. So, a little bit about the AMI portal. Currently, it has eight hundred and seventy-one users and we anticipate that number growing dramatically with our program. Um, the AMI portal allows, uh, residents to have real-time access into meter reading, consumption trends, and alert in the event of a leak. It boasts a ninety-nine point nine percent accuracy rate, allowing for accurate and efficient billing. And it allows our utility staff to monitor meter status and perform diagnostics without sending a truck out into the field, reducing CO2 emissions. It also allows for centralized monitoring, collecting meter data, and using state-of-the-art analytics for real-time leak detection, usage notification, and final bills processing. It also increases the safety of our service crew while reducing costs of unnecessary field visits. We are giving our residents the financial support to bring these designs to life, save water, and in, ensure the beauty of their yards in a more sustainable way. So, this initiative really reflects our city's strong commitment to promoting water conservation among our residents. We understand that we live in a region that faces water challenges and we must adapt to ensure a more sustainable future. By encouraging drought-tolerant plants, we are taking a significant step towards mitigating water waste and contributing to our citywide water conservation goals. We understand that community involvement will be essential to the success of this program and we'll be marketing the program via flyers, social media, and water bill inserts. The funding for our project was allocated to us by the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. We're committed to using these funds efficiently, ensuring transparency. In conclusion, the Sierra Madre Greener Yards Project with its two phases represents a significant step towards a more sustainable, water-conscious, and beautiful Sierra Madre. It's about enhancing the aesthetic appeal of our community while ensuring that we can adapt to changing environmental conditions. It's about empowering our residents to be a part of the solution. Thank you. And there is also a QR code there on the slide for the AMI portal signup.
Thank you, Intern Lee. Do we have any questions from the council? I think you answered my question on the last slide where the funding was coming from. Uh, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that our, um, our water district is, uh, supporting these types of initiatives. So, um, as far as using these vouchers, are there going to be approved, um, uh, nurseries? Or how, 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 how do residents get qualified and once they're qualified, how do they, how do they use these, um, these rebates?
So, we'll have a application process, uh, which verifies that they have signed up for the AMI program. Um, and we're collaborating with one nursery who will have a pop-up just across the street there. Um, and they will have a list of plants that are in line with the landscape designs that we developed in phase one. And those are the plants that they, the residents will be able to choose from.
Thank you. Yes, please.
So, this is fantastic. So, this is a real landscape design. This, you've got everything here.
Yes.
Cause I've, I've been getting bids recently and these things can run a couple thousand dollars or more, depending on how elaborate you want to get. So, this is a thing, if, if our residents can come to grips with any five of these designs, you know, no accounting for taste, but if they like one, they're gonna save a pile just on the design itself.
Yes.
And I think there's enough, enough choices here. I think, I think you're gonna get some takers.
Yep.
I'm thinking about it myself, actually.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Parkers.
I'd like to follow up on Chairman Goss's, uh, question and comment. So, we've got, um, Douglas Designs. I've taken a look at them myself and I really appreciate them. But aren't there also design services associated with California Wild as a part of this program?
Um, California Wild is-
If you could speak in the microphone, that, that's okay. He won't, he won't be able to hear you otherwise, sorry.
Uh, California Wild is primarily geared towards plant fulfillment, so it's pre-planned gardens where we just deliver the plants and the cost of any additional design is built into the price of the plants, which is on par with a brick and mortar nursery because it's an online service. Um, constituents can take the designs that are freely available to them and adapt them to their own landscapes themselves. If they want to hire a custom design adaptation, that is an additional fee, but it's not required.
So, so, uh, you, because some of the designs, there's some unique aspects to implement them. I mean, some of them I think require, like, a dry river bed and some other things. But you would help with the, the basic layouts of that? Or like, you know, how, how do people take what is on the web now, you know, apply it to their own lot of yard just because of size of yard and, you know, different areas, the shading, all of that?
Yeah.
Is that something that you help them with or do they have to figure that out on their own?
It's more or less something they have to figure out on their own unless they want to hire an additional service, which is available. Um, we did try to build the designs around standard lot sizes. The reason, for example, the dry river bed is in there is because, uh, these designs needed to qualify for water smart rebates. And so, each design has a different water smart rebate, uh, water harvesting feature. It is, again, up on the onus of the homeowner if they're applying for that water smart rebate to replace their lawn. If they qualify for that program, in addition, they can get several thousand dollars in funding to also, um, ameliorate the rest of the cost of the plants and if they want to get the plan customized. It's sort of like a plug-and-play template that they can take pieces of or pursue additional services with.
Uh, thank you so much. Thank you for your help with the design and thank you, um, for the city to putting this together. I'm really excited about it and like, uh, others in the council, I think it's a great step forward, a great demonstration of our leadership.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Mayor Ploton?
Don't go too far. Um, do you have, um, sort of, uh, installation companies that you work with or that you recommend? I mean, it doesn't sound like you do that work.
That's not something we've figured out yet. I'm still a small business that's developing this arm. One day, it's a dream to definitely have that kind of, you know, service on demand. But again, that's something that's on the onus of the homeowner to either work with their existing gardener to DIY or to seek out somebody who can install this plan.
So, are there folks that, I mean, not, you have to mention now, but folks that you have worked with, you know, with folks that have hired you for design purposes that you have referrals for?
I don't have referrals for this particular jurisdiction, unfortunately, no.
Thank you.
That kind of led me to one of my suggestions or questions, I guess, would be, I wonder if the Chamber of Commerce could work with our local landscape companies and the, the local Sierra Madre landscape groups that we have and, and irrigation specialists and such. If the Chamber of Commerce could actually work with you and create a list.
Or a vetted list would be really helpful for homeowners. I work all over this-
It's great to have nobody from the chamber is here.
I know.
As I see, um, a chamber member.
Unfortunately, I work all over the state, so my localized knowledge is a little bit limited.
Our chamber is right back there. You should probably talk to her. Can you raise your hand, Carol, so she knows who you are? Carol, can you raise your hand for her, please? Thank you.
So um, what about opportunities for individuals like, like our household where, you know, we had, we have children and they would have really enjoyed a lawn, but we, we kind of bit the bullet. We said, let's do the responsible thing and get rid of this lawn. And uh, my wife is very proud of a hundred percent California native. Uh, but some of them don't take. So we had a huge, I think it was a white sage that uh, our landscaper accidentally got a little too aggressive with it. And I don't think it's going to survive. And so we, we need some replanting type of opportunities. Uh, would we be able to take advantage or residents such as myself take advantage of some of these rebates? Where we have already gone through the process, but some of what we have done so far, as you, you talked about kind of overplanting, I don't know if that, that wasn't your term, but because some of it doesn't survive, right? The density of it.
Yeah, I can't speak towards a water smart rebates. That's a separate program, but I can say that I believe at this time it is only for turf replacement. So, you know, we're all facing a big challenge in landscaping right now where we're transitioning from the landscapes that have existed here for fifty to a hundred years into something that can survive with current climates and resource availabilities. So it's a big process. Um, I'm working on modeling um, kind of fill-in packages because I do think it's something that has scaled over a few years with native plants. Um, the Sierra Madre Greener Yards collection was specifically designed for square foot ordering um, for, through the online service. So you can order as, the smallest amount is three hundred square feet, up to four thousand square feet worth of plants. So in that scenario, it's, you know, roughly basing it off a garden bed size, but you could order the smallest amount and kind of mix it into what you have. Um, I will say something I missed in the presentation is that a huge hurdle is preparing soils for native plants. Most native plants are extremely drainage sensitive. And most of our soils are extremely compacted from the development process. So one of my biggest hacks for preparing soil is to put gravel or rocks into the bottom of your planting holes. Um, and that can provide sensitive plant roots with the drainage that they need. White sages, for example, which you see growing everywhere in the Azusa River beds, um, really need to be in a lot of rock to survive. So we're working on figuring out those details. It's a process, but I think this is a very healthy start. And I think Sierra Madre is really piloting uh, something very unique and innovative in this arena. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Line.
Mayor, if I may add, um, all grants uh, for turf replacement for the city of Sierra Madre come through our water district. Um, our water district uh, will be applying for a federal grant opportunity and will be able to craft the terms and conditions for our residents. Um, and we'll have, we'll have some say in, in how that's crafted. Um, and we hope that um, that grant application will be submitted in the next calendar year.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not just talking about myself. I'm obviously, I'm using myself as a model for other residents. Um, a lot of grant programs um, encourage people to do something, which is great. But I'm, I'm always concerned about those residents that have already started saving water and those residents that have already done these things and maybe they, they need a little help with what they've got going um, that they're, they're paid attention to a little bit as well, so.
And I think your water district directors will be receptive. Two of them asked me the same question and asked for landscaping help after, so.
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that it? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to our standing agenda item, the update on the status of the library meaningful improvement project. I think I saw, can I call you Director, uh, Yunez yet, or are we? Acting Director Yunez, all right. Hey, Library Regan?
I'm going to kick us off. Hello, Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protem Krebs, and our wonderful Honorable City Council. I'm here to tell you that the library has officially been moved. Um, our library at four four zero West Sierra Madre Boulevard is currently empty except for staff is still there, operating temporarily. And we hope to open up our temporary library at three five zero West Sierra Madre Boulevard in December. Um, just to, a reminder that we will be there for up to two years. Additionally, we are working on having an event. Um, January fifth is the not quite finalized date, but we're hoping to have a fond farewell party at the former library? At the renovated, almost renovated library, soon to be renovated library. Um, it will allow the public a chance to come and write their farewells on the shelving. That is the original nineteen fifty-five shelving that we don't think will survive the renovation, unfortunately. So um, just a nice uh, community event that we're hoping for. And right now, the staff is very busy just trying to set up the temporary. We had um, a lot of books come over and we want to make sure that we have the library as usable as possible for the public before we have anyone come in. So that's all I have for you today. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. I just, I think just like comment, I just, I'd like to thank you and your staff for keeping our residents apprised through, through photographs. Uh, really, the photographs are telling a story on, on social media. So uh, we appreciate the efforts to um, communicate with our residents in, in that way. And there really are, there really is telling a story uh, between those two buildings and what's been going on. So thank you for that. Anything from the council?
All right, I'm gonna hand it off to uh, Acting Director Pub- of Public Works, Sir Yunez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. City staff carefully crafted an RFP, request for proposal for the construction management of the library, meaningful expansion. We estimated the construction management portion of the project would be sixty-eight percent of the project or between five thou- five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand dollars. In addition to our internal estimates, uh, we received feedback from our architect, TSK Architects, and two other construction management teams who estimates were both in line with ours. We recently went out to bid for construction prime management services and received two bids. Uh, the two bids received only one. Uh, it's qualified for consideration as the second bid was submitted uh, after the noticed deadline. The first bid came in at one point six million dollars, which exceeds the budget by almost a million dollars. The second bid was within our estimated budget, however. Uh, it cannot be considered uh, tonight because it does not meet the submission deadline, as mentioned earlier. Uh, because the only qualified bid exceeds our budget by nearly a million dollars, staff will be recommending the rejection uh, of the bids as part of tonight's uh, agendaized items for council consideration. At this time, we are working on an alternate, alternate plan. Um, one which includes a construction manager owner representative. The owner representative and project manager would oversee all aspects of the construction project while representing the city's best interest. The construction manager owner rep would serve to advise the city and stakeholders and act uh, on our behalf, ensuring the successful delivery of the construction project. We will continue to explore this and other options over the next few weeks. Now, now an update on the construction plans. TSK Architects is developing our construction plans and we look to have sixty percent a set of plans to review in the next three to four weeks. TSK, um, although, I'm sorry, although we have a few design setbacks, uh, we still plan to award construction uh, at the end of January of twenty twenty-four or early February. The next step in our progress will be to bring council a construction management solution. We hope to have that to council by the second meeting in January. Uh, so council, this concludes my update.
Thank you. And um, and I do, I do have a question and I, I don't know if I should ask it uh, cause it's a, the consent item as well, but I think since you've opened it up in the presentation, um, just want to have an understanding of, of, is there a requirement of the number of bids uh, for a multi-prime services? I know for some of our, some of our bidding procedures, there is a minimum number of bids that we want to see. Uh, do we, do we have that here for, I know it's consent item D, but do we have that issue here?
I don't think we have that.
So one bid's okay, but um, obviously it's not, not even close to our budget, but.
One bid, if, if it was within budget, then we would um, uh, we would check the qualifications of the, the the uh, construction manager. Um, and if everything checked out, then we would make that recommendation.
I'll, I'll save my comments for, for consent calendar on that, but uh, thank you for that. Any questions for uh, Acting Director?
Yeah, I do. So um, I'm gonna get this straight. So we're, I, I understand the urgency. I, I understand why we're trying to come up with an aggressive timeline. Um, so, but I'm concerned here because we're talking about awarding contracts as early as late January, but we still haven't got a project management decision yet. So how can that happen? We're gonna have to make that decision awfully fast to be able to award contracts that earlier, right?
That is correct, sir. Uh, that's why currently we are overlapping uh, with plans and then working with the city manager's office and with TSK Architects, making sure that those deadlines are met.
Okay, so it's gonna be like a handoff almost, as soon as the project management is, the site, decision is made, they're gonna have some ideas already? Are they going to start from scratch or how, how's that gonna work?
That, that is the goal, sir, to have some ideas in place already.
Okay, yeah, I think, and I think I, I will have some follow-up questions when we get to consent calendar on that as well and comment. So we can open that up a little bit. Um, anything else for Acting Director Yunez?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Good, good evening, uh, Acting Deputy Yunez.
Great, good evening.
How, we expect folks in the process, we're already having a couple now and trying to find uh, a project manager for this. How are you looking to try to make sure that we don't miss our window here and that we get, you know, like, if we get the, I don't know, you said the construction company at the end of January, early February, right? Is that putting us on, on track to things? Are there other things that we can do to help remove barriers for you to make sure that, that uh, we don't miss our, our, our construction window and our grant uh, window for the funds that we've got?
Sir, this council has been very supportive since day one. Um, the support is very much appreciated. Uh, the constant communications, the weekly communications, the daily communications that I have with the uh, Director Semino and uh, City Manager Ray Nozo, along with daily communication with TSK Architects. Um, as a, as I sit, as I sat here in this meeting tonight, I was texting TSK Architects. Uh, we're at, right now at about a forty-five, forty-seven percent um, completion of the plans. And as I noted earlier, we're uh, requesting sixty percent within three to four weeks. So that, that is definitely a, a good sign. Uh, this afternoon I did receive some preliminary designs, uh, layouts, and some new renderings that I'll present to uh, City Manager Ray Nozo this week also. Councilmember, did I answer your question, sir?
It, it did, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll see you at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
I did, I did see a hand up. Um, so if you do have public comment, Mr. Gordon, if you please uh, approach the, the lectern. As long as it's, has to do with this presentation.
Um, well, yes, I, I'm sort of, sort of puzzled because I thought that this building that the library is moving into was for the police station. So I was just wondering what happened to the police station idea.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Okay, moving on to our consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, can you please read the consent calendar by item only, title only, rather?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The uh, city council is being asked this evening to consider four items on the consent calendar. Item A is consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-eight approving certain demands. And it is recommended that the city council approve and adopt Resolution number twenty-three dash sixty-eight. Consent item B is the uh, replacement for the water treatment granular activated carbon. It is recommended that the city council award a contract to Carbon Activated Corporation in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, consent item C is a receivable file of the city uh, treasures, treasures report for the quarter ending September thirty, twenty twenty-three. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, the consent item D is the recommendation to reject all bids for the Sierra Madre Library Significant Improvement Construction Management Multi-Prime Services Project. And uh, that is specification number FC eight-two-three-zero-six. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So let's bring it back to the council for questions on these four items. Do we have any questions on the warrants? Item A?
I just had a quick question.
Please.
I, I understand that um, we have a, a crime, a police mapping system. Does that, do, does the public get to see that or is that just what comes out in the reports? And one of the warrants, it was um, police mapping. Which was really exciting.
Feel very safe right now.
I do too.
The crime mapping system is, it is a uh, external portal that the community can uh, look, can have access to. And it populates, um, anytime that the department takes a report of a incident, it'll populate a little um, markers on a city map and um, and they can see what the report is for. Uh, we're, we're actually in the process of transitioning from one company to another. So uh, it may be down for a little bit while we do the backend IT related stuff, but uh, we are hoping to have it up and running by uh, the first of the year.
And is, is that available on our website?
Uh, yes, it is attached. It is part of the uh, it's part of the city's website, which is underneath the police department. We have a civic uh, community portion and that is one of the things that the community can, can look into.
That's great, because people were just asking for that and, and this, and the city newspaper was asking for that too. And I was like, oh, wow. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Didn't know we had that.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on item B?
Mr. Mayor?
Our coconut shells, right? Yeah. Yes, please, uh, Councilmember Parkers.
Uh, so my question is, is it typical to have um, detection of VOCs, the lag vessels, at fifty percent MCL? Uh, when, when the, the, the GAC is supposed to, or when the vessels are supposed to be able to get up to seventy-five percent MCL? So I'm trying to understand, like, are, are we seeing, and because the um, GAC unit is so old, are we seeing breakthrough earlier than, than we, we should be seeing now?
And uh, Councilmember Parkers, we have um, we have Supervisor McGee here as the lectern to answer that for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Uh, yeah, when we take, when we do the GACs, it is a, is it a bi-yearly? So we have ten filters and we do a filter, there's a lead la- a lead and lag system. So there's five lead, five lag. We're not replacing them every single year. We're replacing one side every year and putting it into the, to the lag position. So um, to answer the council member's question, yes, the detection is, is notable. It, it starts off where we move down the filters from a fifty percent port to a seventy-five percent port to a ta- to a hundred percent port. So you are gonna see detection at a low fifty percent. The reason we do that is we do not want to get to the seventy-five percent port and wait too long. We've, we've done that in the past. We've waited too long several years and it's, one, we don't want to get that close, and two, it is very difficult to remove the media at that point. So because of detection at fifty percent and because of saturation, we do want to remove that on a bi-yearly for the, for the leads and the lags. So we're doing the B side this year. We'll do the A side next year and so forth and so on.
Superintendent McGee, I, I, I think it's, I don't want to clarify your question for you, but I, I know you're remote. Was your question about the um, as far as the, the asset, the infrastructure, um, not, not, not the actual carbon or the, were you asking about the, the actual tank?
I, I was, thank, thank you for asking the clarification. No, it was, it was, it was about the, the, the activated carbon that's in there. I just didn't know about if the structures had anything to do with it, whether there was any type of, of inefficiencies. I mean, it's a tank essentially.
Yeah.
But I, I, but I was trying to see it, it, so Supervisor McGee answered my question um, to, to about what I was asking, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item C or D? Sorry, B, rather. The alphabet's a little tough today. Okay, moving on to item C, the treasures report. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think I have one too. Um, Deputy Director, or Director Guerellion? She's, she's walking down, Councilmember Parkers. I think you can ask your question. She can hear you.
So, so yeah, I'll ask my questions. She's coming down. Good evening.
Good evening.
So my, my question is, is Bank of the West was recently acquired by Bank of Montreal or BMO? Um, yeah, does that have any impact on our financial statements? Does it open up any opportunities? Does it close off anything? Is there any impact to, to Bank of the West through its acquisition by?
Does it close off anything? Is there any impact to Bank of the West through its acquisition by BMO?
Thank you for your question, councilmember. So, it, it doesn't have a big impact with, with what we're already operating in our bank, from Bank of the West. They also transitioned really well and always have our, they come and visit us to have, to make sure that everything's going well. So, there, there is no big, big impact on affecting us in our accounts.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, any more questions before I jump in? So, I want to make sure I have an understanding of our, of our policy right now. And I know that yourself and our City Treasurer, Mario, have been, been very active, and I've been applauding the fact that you have been stepping outside of LEAF funds and investing in U.S. Treasury securities. I'm not, I'm not seeing a lot of acquisitions of, of new ladders of, of short-term bonds. And we could be taking advantage of nearly five percent on short-term U.S. Treasuries. And I'm not seeing the kind of size coming into, when I look at the acquisition schedule, maybe since the Treasury report we have. But why aren't we doing that? Is it because we're still waiting for some to, some of the Treasuries to mature out? Or are we putting more into LEAF, since LEAF is relatively higher? Because I'm kind of concerned, because if we could be earning five percent on those reserves, that would, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Mayor, for your question. Yes, it's mainly because LEAF is doing a little better now with the returns. And then also, LEAF, we can easily transfer if we need it to our cashing.
Liquid.
Yeah, liquidity, and especially now with the library project and the timing on that as well, if we've been holding off on doing any new ones. But I do have a meeting tomorrow with our Treasurer to discuss future investments.
Okay, and I would encourage us, because of that, that shorthand side of the yield curve is inverted to our, to our benefit for our liquidity for our city. So, I think the more we can get into those short, the short-term maturities, and we can hold those to maturity, even if, you know, interest rates go down or up, it doesn't matter once, if we hold those things to maturity. So, I would encourage us, when we have any extra funds, to get into those shorter terms. Thank you.
I'll discuss with them.
Moving on to item D, any questions on that? I think we do have a couple, or did we exhaust those? I just, I just want to have an understanding, and I know we've talked about it before, but I want, you know, full transparency. We were going forward with this library meaningful improvement without even the consideration of a man, someone to manage this construction project, is that correct?
That is correct.
The council and their wisdom and staff thought that, you know, that's a lot of work to lay on one staff member that also, by the way, has other projects. So, we came up with the plan to possibly hire somebody. But I think we may have overstated what our needs were, and that's why we're getting one-point-six-million-dollar bids? Or, or, how, or is it because somebody knows, hey, we're the only one bidding, let's high-bid it and see if we can get this? What's going on here?
We think that that could be part of it. Only one responsible bidder attended the job walk, and so with no competition there, there's, there's an opportunity. We also did go out for a construction management prime, which is a little bit different than a owner rep. With the prime, what they would be doing was helping craft bids for each specific task. So, framing, foundation, electrical, plumbing, with the idea that instead of a general contractor going out and getting, acquiring bids from, from subs, and then marking that up ten, fifteen percent by us doing the prime and having somebody on our behalf put these, these RFPs out and bids out, that we could lower the, the cost. But when the, when the prime contract comes in at twenty percent, there's no significant savings there. So, we're looking at shifting and, and maybe award, or going out to award this, this project, construction project for a general contractor. And then having an owner rep oversee and be that in-between to make sure that the project is going smoothly. So, we're looking at other options, you know, after these, these bids came back, and especially at over a million dollars above budget, the cost savings is not there, number one, we can't afford it, number two. And we think there's some other opportunities for us to make sure that we have good project management and we have the project delivered on time and on schedule.
So, effectively, staff would have been an owner rep type of manager anyway, right? So, that's probably what we need at a minimum, but I'm asking, it's question phase, so that's what we need as a minimum?
That's the minimum, and we could always transition when we, if we go this route and we have an owner rep, we can always transition to a prime if, if needed. But to your point, the, the minimum would be an owner rep that has the experience and the know-how to manage a project of this magnitude.
And it was my understanding that TSK was a full-service, it was, they were design and build. Where, where do they fit into this equation as far as their responsibilities for hiring contractors, et cetera?
So, my understanding is they were full-service design, but I can have Acting Director expand on that.
Yes, sir, thank you for that question, sir. As the project developed, TSK will be involved in working with, with that project manager when it comes to the actual planning, design. TSK will be, also be onsite from an architecture perspective. The project manager will then relay all that information to the constructions, our city itself.
Okay, so, can you just explain, because weren't they called design and build? That was one of the reasons we wanted them. What is the build part?
That is correct, sir. There, there was some miscommunication, some misunderstanding on TSK's part regarding the proposal, original proposal that went out, you know, a year ago. That's where that, that miscommunication occurred. As they came on board and things developed, it was discussed, and that's when, well, we became aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
I was wondering, too, did, when we went out to bid for the current prime manager position or bid, that was also an accountability for a rush? Because we had a, at an earlier date, a whole year earlier, that we had to complete it. So, that would have been a lot more work, true, that a company would have to, or somebody would have to oversee. But now that we have an extra year, that, that rush or that sense of urgency can be laid, am I correct? Is that, could that become an account for why the bid was so high?
That is one of the primary reasons why the first bids, I think, came even, came even higher than, than the second go-around. But there was urgency, and there are still some supply chain issues for some components. And some of the feedback that we got was that was driving up the cost because of uncertainty on whether or not they'd be able to source some, some equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you for all this. Any more questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's bring it back to the public. Any public comment cards for items on the consent calendar? You can fill out a card, Mr. Gordon, and bring it on down, and, and, I, I am a professor, and I do recognize the raising of the hands, but...
Mr. Mayor, I just checked with our IT department, and we don't have anyone in the queue for public comment. And the City Clerk's office did not receive any emails for public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gordon, and I'm not trying to be a pain in your, in your behind, but it helps for the, for the rec, the public record for minutes to have these cards. Please.
So, a number of questions about the Treasurer's Report. It's simply staggering to me that we have forty million dollars in cash and investments. I mean, what does this say, of which twelve million is general, there are lots of little pockets here and there. But I would urge the council to step back and think about why so much money is not being spent on infrastructure and other things. I have a few ideas of how the council could wisely spend its money. But my central point is that the city is actually incredibly well-funded, and there is scope for spending money a bit faster and in new and, and creative ways. I would also ask why two-point-two of the ARPA funds have still not been spent? What are they being kept for? I would also ask why, when interest rates are five percent or close to five percent, the annual income, as specified in the Treasurer's Report, is not two million, but one-point-two million? Why hasn't the money been invested in Treasury bills, which at short end are paying nearly five percent? I cannot understand it. So, those are my questions about that. As far as construction management and so on is concerned, I think the questions that the mayor began to ask are extremely valid. It is worrying that the library seems to be so far behind on all kinds of things. Luckily, there has been the extension granted. But it does raise concerns about whether the city has got the resources in-house to handle not only the library, but also the police station, which we now discover has obviously been deferred for whatever reason. It would be nice to know why. So, is this part of a pattern where the city is under-investing also in its human capital? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any more public comment cards, Madam City Clerk?
No other cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Now, I'll just say that, yeah, generally, very happy with, with the Treasurer and the Treasurer's Report, always kudos to our, our city staff on that, as well as our City Treasurer. I will, I will note that over eleven million of that forty million is utility, water and sewer, and those monies are locked up, and we can't touch those anyway. Two million is, is ARPA funds, they're, they're already spent, but not dispersed. Five million is the targeted grant for the library. One-point-five million are assessment districts, we can't go spending those, right, because those belong to assessments in certain districts. We have Prop A funds to tune of nearly a million dollars. I can go on and on, and all of these funds within our fund balances for our reserves that we cannot touch. They are there for reasons to be spent on special, special things. So, I just want to leave that there as my comment. I do understand the public commenter's predicament, and we, we do, sometimes the fiscally responsible thing to do is to spend money. And we, I think this council would agree that we need to continue to spend money on our infrastructure and maintain our infrastructure, and not get into deferred maintenance-type of situations like we stepped into when we were elected to this council. But I think, all in all, we are paying attention, and we will continue to pay attention and be watchdogs on your behalf for the citizenry. So, I do appreciate your comment on that, it's very important to hear this from the citizens as well. Thank you. Any other comments on consent before we have a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's been, you know, a fair amount of consternation around the bids for the contract manager for the library project. And we've had a couple of different developments over the lifespan of the two bid proposals we put out to RFP. One of the reasons why we have these updates at every meeting is to exactly track, you know, the, the progress here. There, you know, there's lots of things that the city is doing that we don't have updates on at every meeting. And obviously, this, the magnitude and importance of this project, you know, we've asked for that transparency, the mayor asked for that transparency at every meeting. And, you know, I think we're seeing all of the sort of bumps in the road in a project of this magnitude in a way that we aren't seeing in every, in every instance. And so, I don't want to overstate that they're somehow going off the rails. I think this is all, I wouldn't say typical, but, you know, we're, we're seeing things that, you know, that we have, challenges that we have to address. And I appreciate the willingness to bring that forward, both to us and to the public, in a real-time, in a real-time way. And that just is gonna mean that we're gonna see sort of the sausage-making that we don't normally see. So, I appreciate all of that. That said, you know, we all, I think, are striving to, you know, streamline the process. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of learning in terms of how, how to prepare the, the RFP so that it gets the kind of response that we need. And we are getting a fair number of sort of inputs on that basis, both, you know, within the city, as well as, you know, sort of on a consulting basis from folks who have expertise here. So, I, I feel confident that we're gonna get there, and I don't think we're actually significantly off, off-schedule, especially given the, the extension. But I just wanted to sort of point that out, because I do think we're getting more information in a way that makes it seem more negative than it actually is.
Good point, point well-taken, thank you. Councilmember Goss, please.
I agree with pretty much everything you said. I'm, I'm confident that we're gonna get this done by the deadline. You know, it's sausage-making we don't typically see, right? So, because administrators have to get in and do things that we don't hear about, we just hear generalities about. So, the transparency we're getting is maybe more than we're used to, and maybe there are details that we maybe shouldn't know about until later. I mean, we, we play a role here, we hold our government accountable for the things they do. So, I think we should show them confidence and see what they can do. I think, right now, we're gonna get these things ironed out pretty soon. And I'm just very excited about the whole prospect, because I spent all these years on the council with no hope of having essentially a new library. So, now we're in a position where, now we're just hemming and hawing about how fast it's gonna get done, and will we have to pay a little extra along the way? So, to me, I think we're in a, in a good spot.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss.
I appreciate the, the transparency, like you said, too, and I think these plans have been so instrumental to the public, too, to know what's happening at each stage. And what I really value is that we've seen this from every stage, and we've publicly announced what's going on. And originally, we looked at, you know, using the, the, I call the YAC, it's the six-eleven, the YMCA building. And that would have really removed a lot of space for our citizens and people to be able to use that facility. We have award ceremonies there, and, and our families and our residents all use space there, and that would have been used up for two years, and it's so much smaller. So, by using this building, I, I really value that, that we're taking this time for, for our staff to really look, invest and look at what's best for us. Instead of just going with, with bids or going with outside resources, we're really looking at what's best for our city. And as that changes, we're so dynamic that, that our department heads are being so great about figuring out better solutions. Like, I mean, we have a building sitting right there that we can't build on quite yet, and so why not use that in the two years that we need to do it? It's much larger, it's a better resource for our citizens to go and use a library than a small little room that we were gonna be using. And so, I think that's just really fantastic, so thank you, staff.
As we hunt for public safety infrastructure grants at the federal level.
For any level.
For any level, yes. State, county, if you're listening.
Local.
Okay, any, any other comments? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
To approve the consent calendar, and appreciate all of the comments from my fellow councilmembers, I am going to make one, and I'm cheering, and it is all very much so. So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I will second.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Parkers, for that motion, and the second by Mayor Protem Krebs. This is, we do have resolutions and ordinances here, so we do need to take a vote by roll call, since we are, we are semi-remote. So, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll for the vote?
Mayor Eduardo Garcia, your vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kelly Krebs, your vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Jean Goss, your vote?
Aye.
And Councilmember Christine Lowe, your vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert Parkers, your vote? Mr. Mayor, we have a unanimous approval of this, of the consent items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, moving on to our public hearing, this is the consideration of adoption of Resolution twenty-three eighty-nine approving twenty-three sixty-nine, that was before I put my glasses on, thank you. A development agreement for the McComber Cabin, that's hard to say that five times fast, McComber Cabin. I've been saying it all day. And the First Amendment to amended and restated Declaration of Establishment of Conditions, Covenants, Easements, and Restrictions for Stonegate at Sierra Madre and Three. A Third Amendment to the settlement agreement, and release with C E T T Investments Corporation. So, I'm gonna open it up to the presentation, I think we have Planner Lynn? And at this point in time, if, if you do want to make public comment for the public hearing, please fill out a yellow card and provide that to our City Clerk.
Mayor, this will be a joint presentation by Planning Manager Clarlin and our City Attorney, Gary Gosin.
Thank you.
Council, before you today, you have three separate actions as part of one agenda item. I'll begin with the introduction, and then I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Lynn. And we have the applicants here as well. I see them in the gallery. So, we have the three actions before you, as stated by the mayor, relate to an amendment to the settlement agreement, the adoption of a development agreement, as well as an amendment to the CCNRs for this property. Now, how do they relate to each other? The settlement agreement in 2018 has been extended twice so far. There's been a First Amendment, and there's been a Second Amendment. The Second Amendment to the settlement agreement is set to expire this December. If the settlement agreement expires, then the Hillside Management Zone standards will control, not the standards that have been articulated in the settlement agreement, which will likely lead potentially to the resumption of litigation and picking up where we left off. Because the parties are open to extending the settlement agreement for a third, having a Third Amendment to the settlement agreement to extend it two more years, we, staff approached the applicant and suggested a potential concession that benefits both parties. So, staff is proposing this Heritage Square idea by concentrating Sierra Madre's historical structures in one place, that place being the Mount Wilson Trail Park. The city will benefit, because the city will have all three structures there, and the applicant has offered to pay for a lot of the expenses involving relocation of that and maintenance of it, as well as expenses related to the improvements needed for Lizzie's Trail Inn and the Richardson House. The applicant benefits, because the applicant will have more space to develop on Lot 18, which is where currently the McComber Cabin is located, as well as shifting the burden of potential maintenance costs off whoever purchases that site over to the city, as that's going to become a city asset. The value to the applicant, per the terms of the development agreement, is just in terms of reimbursement to the city, $129,000. That's not including the expense that the applicant will have to bear for any potential demolitions, as well as any potential construction of the replica for that McComber Cabin. Staff's going to talk about what that replica will look like, and I'm sure the applicant's going to have some points to raise about that as well. The development agreement also contemplates, like I said, improvements not just to the McComber Cabin, but to Lizzie's Trail Inn and Richardson House, which the city has budgeted for. In total, the city's budget is approximately $200,000 for all three structures on that site. And so, like we pointed out, the applicant has offered to cover $129,000 of that as reimbursement to the city. All this is expected to be done within one year's time, per the timeline in the development agreement. The applicant has, per the terms of this, if this amendment is approved, the applicant will have two years to submit all the applications, finish this relocation. And according to the applicant, they believe they can obtain all entitlements within these next two years, which would essentially close out this CETT development, the Stone House development, or Stonegate, sorry. Stonegate development, for purposes of the settlement agreement. Lastly, this item was brought to the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission did provide feedback to planning staff. And we've incorporated their amendments into the development agreement. And I just want to highlight both of them. We've added a Section 4 Site Plan Review, which states that CETT will submit a site plan to the city for review and comment by the Sierra Madre Planning Commission. And we've also added a Section 5 Historic Preservation Plan. And that states that CETT will submit a historic preservation plan to the city detailing the methods and materials used to preserve the historic nature of McComber Cabin. And I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Lynn at this point, to go over some of the details of what this looks like.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have a brief presentation for you regarding the relocation plan for McComber Cabin for your consideration. McComber Cabin, together with the Carter Barn, occupies Lot 18 on a private property of the Stonegate subdivision. The location is at the top of the Baldwin, and when you continue on to the private road Baldwin Court. The land use and the zoning destination are Hillside and Hillside Residential. Provided is the site plan depicted the location of the two structure. The larger structure is the Carter Barn, and McComber Cabin being the smaller structure at the southwest corner. This is the current condition of the McComber Cabin viewing from the street. The property owner has reported that it has been a challenge to upkeep the structure that was constructed without a foundation. Also, maintenance is also difficult. We have the applicant and the architect. They can elaborate on that and their observation. The first document confirming the settlement of the rental is an 1873 map that noted a home stater cabin on the property, constructed and occupied by George A. McComber. Due to the historical significance, a de-restriction was recorded along with a mothball plan for the applicant to preserve both structure until there is a future plan, future plan in place. Both Heritage Resources Report and the Historical Resources Technical Report by Sapphoz stated that there is architectural and cultural significance to both structures. In the report, it also stated that the cabin is likely to be constructed in two phases. First phase being a small kitchen with the workplace where the fireplace is. And then, later on, depicted by the red line, the left portion of it was built at a later time. It was a living quarter and a sleeping quarter. McComber Cabin is one of the oldest residents remaining of its type in the city of Sierra Madre. Here are the additional photos of McComber Cabin. And you can see the blue area is the later portion that was built. And all the windows are boarded up. And you can see that there is a gap at the bottom of the siding. And the property owner was trying to board it up to prevent from intruders. So, in order to preserve McComber Cabin, staff has proposed this idea to construct a replica of the cabin's original front portion and relocate the McComber Cabin to Mount Wilson Trail Park, where Lizzie's Trail and Richardson House is at. City met with the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society, who is amenable to the concept in the initial meeting. The applicant, the developer, is also willing to undertake the expense of the reconstruction of the replica, and also contribute fund to the relocation of the cabin. And on top of that, rehabilitation of Lizzie's Trail Inn and also the Richardson House. The applicant is also willing to amend the declaration, including the CCNR, to reflect the new plan for the McComber Cabin. Once the McComber Cabin is relocated, the maintenance and the responsibility will be falling either on the city or with the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society. At the last meeting, November 2nd, Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission unanimously recommended the relocation plan for the McComber Cabin with the suggestion that our city attorney mentioned, for the applicant to prepare a site plan and a technical historical preservation plan, abided by the Secretary of the Interior standard, and bring that back to Planning Commission for their review. The future site of the McComber Cabin is the Mount Wilson Trail Park, located at the corner of Mount Wilson Trail and East Maramonte Avenue. The land use and zoning destination is Civic and City Park. The site contains two structure, Richardson House and Lizzie's Trail Inn. Both buildings are owned by the city and used as a museum by the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society. Richardson House was constructed here in 1879. And Lizzie's Trail Inn was moved here due to the construction of the water reservoir across the street, just west side of the Mount Wilson Trail. So, the idea is to create this collection of museum at the park. McComber Cabin being constructed 1873. Richardson House was constructed 1879. And Lizzie's Trail Inn constructed circa 1890. Provided are the photographs of the Lizzie's Trail Inn, and also the facade of the Richardson House. Lizzie's Trail Inn was just received its destination as a historical landmark in August this year for its close association with the early settlement and the residential development in the city. Just east of the Richardson House, there is a open space next to it that would be the proposed site for the McComber Cabin. And it's between Richardson House and the Turtle Park next to it. So, in order to proceed with the relocation, we have to look at the site and ask the applicant to probably provide us a more specific site plan with a topographic map, and bring that back to the Planning Commission. And the tree to the right is an Italian stone pine. It has been dropping limbs, and property works is keeping a close eye and maybe propose a removal of that Italian stone pine right next to the sidewalk. So, to move forward with the plan, city council will have to review the documents that is already in place. City council approved a resolution back in 2005, including a conditions of approval that was specified, the plans for McComber Cabin at Lot 18. Also, a resolution adopted in 2007 has a defer improvement agreement, also a declaration of CCNR that will need to be amended. Here is the timeline that was described by our city attorney. It outlines both parties' application and a timeline for each action item. So, alternative before the city council this evening is to approve the resolution, approve the resolution with modification, deny the resolution, or continue the consideration. Staff is recommending that the city council approve Resolution Number 23-69, approving the development agreement for the McComber Cabin, and the First Amendment to amend the CCNR, and Third Amendment to the settlement agreement, and release with CETT Investment Corporation. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Lynn. I think I'll give Councilmember Parkers an opportunity, if you're ready, since you're remote, for first questions for staff.
If you would care. So, Mr. Mayor, what happens if we don't remove the McComber Cabin? Will it have to be done with it?
So, the current CCNR has a mothball plan for both McComber Cabin and the Carter Barn to remain its location. The condition of the both structure are not ideal. There's no sound structure for both building. So, the applicant will have to reconstruct in place for both buildings and incorporate that into the future residential design.
So, the McComber Cabin, if we did move it, it would have to be reconstructed in place, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And the funds that we have, what is the cost just to move the cabin? If we isolate out the cost, if you just move the cabin, is that, is the amount we would have to pay? What do you ask, what do you ask the question? Is the payment for, what does that will have on Lizzie's Trail Inn and the Richardson House? Will it be the money from the repair of either of those?
No. So, Lizzie's Trails and Richardson House has, our city manager has already approved a budget for $70,000 for its rehabilitation.
Councilmember Parkers.
Is it going to get some funds out of it to help repair Lizzie's Trail Inn and the Richardson House, in addition to moving the McComber Cabin?
That's correct. The developer is willing to fund a partial rehabilitation for both structure at the Mount Wilson Trail Park.
Councilmember Parkers, if you could speak up just a little bit, I think we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. I know it's a little rough with your illness, but if you could, I think it would help the public.
That's no problem. Is that better now?
Marginally. I don't want you to have to yell, but...
Okay. I will do the best I can. I really have one other question, and that is, what is the suit that we move to the McComber Cabin to the new location? Who is responsible for the maintenance of that cabin now, to the future? Will, yeah, who is responsible for the maintenance of that cabin if we move it to the new heritage park?
So, once it's moved to the Mount Wilson Trail Park, the responsibility and the maintenance will be fall on the city and the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society.
Can I follow up to that question, too? So, it is on city property. So, it is up to the city to ultimately maintain, correct?
You're saying after the move?
After, after the move.
Yes, yes, okay.
Correct.
You know, the air conditioner kicked off, Councilmember Parkers. We might be able to hear you a little better now, if you have more questions.
I've asked everything I want to tell you. Will you allow a lot of people to ask?
Okay, if you have more questions, go ahead and chime in. Let's bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Lowe, looks like she's ready.
Okay, so, my questions are a few, and I've been up in that property for many, many years, ever since, before even it was owned by Marinatha. What was the, what was the current, what is the current, what is the current status of the McComber Cabin? And you might have more information from us from CETT, because they've done some analysis of what it is. Why can't we just rebuild and, why can't we reconstruct it as it is right now? Why can't we just fix it? Why can't we just fix it?
Yeah, I would like to invite the architect to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretend and council members. My name is Stephen Chen, representing CETT and also the architect for the project. So, to answer your question, why we cannot fix the building or retrofit the cabin, there's a number of reasons. Number one, it wasn't built to up to the current design building code. There's no proper foundation for the building, number one. Number two, the existing tree was kind of comingo with the house right now. If you go into the south side, you will see that tree was kind of attached to the building. It almost become a treehouse right now because of that reason. Number two, a lot of the structural that was holding the building right now if decayed or wasn't built properly. It was built for a, I'm not sure if it's a long-term living condition or temporary workshop or during that time. But to retrofit or rebuild that house, it's almost a hundred percent rebuilt already, number one. Number two, even if we can rebuild that house on site, we have to, we have to demo the tree because that tree was in place of the house. It was kind of like going together right now. So, one of them has to go. So, I think the most important will be the house because of the historical value for the house. So, that was number two reason. Number three, even after we rebuild the house to what it is and everything hundred, almost hundred percent what it is now, it cannot be occupied as a livable space because it doesn't mean a lot of a cope on the building high or the space high, egress and all that kind of thing. So, even after we rebuild the cabin on site, we still cannot use it as a duelling unit. It can only be the best way to be a storage or I don't even want to call it as a playhouse for the kid or something because a lot of areas only like five feet high or four foot half, something like that. I'm not sure what happened back then, but it's very low. So, after we combine all these reasons, that's why we're having a lot of a hard time trying to repurpose this building. We don't know, even after we rebuild it, what's the purpose of this structure? So, after these discussions that the city staff and the historical society come up with a good idea that we can relocate this structure to donate to the city as a part of a historical resource at the public park that the community and everybody can go and enjoy to see what's the history of the Sierra Madre for back then on the barn house and those cabins. So, that's where we are at right now to present to the city council members and mayor and mayor pretend to approve this proposal to repurpose this building, not just become a storage on someone's front yard, not even.
Residential property, not?
Right, it is. So, it cannot be open to public. So, now we repurpose this building to a better purpose right now. I think that will be a win-win situation to the developer so they don't have to worry about building something that they cannot use or the future homer can only use it as a storage or a little playhouse for the kids. And now, all the cities, the citizen or the community can come enjoy that historical project. So, that's the main part and the reason for that hope coming from. And the developers willing to contribute extra funds, not just to rebuild the house and also relocate the house, the building to the future site and also help to repair the two existing historical structure to upkeep the other two, to make that into a nicer place to enjoy for the resident or the communities. Thank you.
Chris, can I follow up?
Yep.
Similar, but I guess pivoting a little bit. In terms of reconstructing a replica, I mean, is it your plan to, I understand that it's your plan to try to reuse as much of the existing material as possible in that, in that sort of reconstitution. What is your sense of, you know, how much of that is viable? And I understand that it's in pretty poor condition currently. And so, I guess, you know, do you have a sense of like how much of the existing material? And could you explain a little bit about how you might go about incorporating the existing, the existing structure materials into the replica?
Sure. So, everything structural sound is not there anymore. So, we have to rebuild the core and shell of this cabin to be structurally sound. Anything that we can reuse from the existing, I would say covering, like sightings or I think the roof is totally gone because the waterproofing is not there anymore. All the sighting, the only element that we can reuse from the existing cabin that we try to reuse that as much as possible, especially the fireplace. Because that's one of the part we feel like there's no way we can rebuild that hundred percent. So, I think the most important would be that fireplace, how we can protect that in place and then move the whole pieces to the new structure. The rest of the sighting or the finishes that we can borrow as much as we can from the existing house. That's why when we talk about demolition of a house, that won't happen in the first place. We're going to build the structural for the cabin in the future on the next side, right next to the cabin. We own the other side next to it, so we're going to build that next to that. While we're building the shell or the structure of the future cabin, we're going to slowly taking pieces from the existing cabin and then reposition to the new structure to replicate that building as much as we can. That's the plan that we have so far. Without a further investigation, we don't know exactly how much we can save because that building has been sitting there for long. And for the last three years, because of pandemic, we barely went out there to try to figure out what's going on until this year, we're starting reprocessing all the approval process. For the last six months, we already got four project approved and two is under the plan check, ready for construction anytime soon. So, I think we try to pick up the speed, but at the same time, we try to resolve lot eighteen as much as we can because I think that is one of the, this lot in the site on the project that everybody's trying to focus down to find a solution for that. The longer we wait, the less component that we can reuse or reposition for the future historical piece. So, that's why we want to get this going as soon as possible.
Councilmember Goss?
I'm.
Oh, go ahead. No, no.
You go.
Okay.
You don't answer. If you don't ask, it's gonna.
So, yeah, I have a few questions, and as, you know, as we go through these, feel free to expand on any of these that I have as we get answers. I'm not trying to make the meeting long, but I want to make sure we open everything up and discuss these issues. So, I'm thinking, you know, of the history of the property and the history of conditions. The first, as Planner Lynn showed us in two thousand and five, the conditions were put on the cabin and the barn at that time. And as we're thinking about the mothball plan, was the mothball plan part of the two thousand and fifteen settlement agreement? Or was that going all the way back to two thousand and five? I want to make sure we have a good understanding of the history.
Mr. Mayor, it's the two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, so the first settlement agreement, not the second, okay. So, I did a site walk up there today. I walked around and I, sorry, I was on your property, but I needed to know. I was kind of looking under things and seeing, you know, the pilings that it's on. There's no foundation whatsoever. And, you know, looking at the eaves, and I can tell you that some of the degradation, it takes more than ten years to, or whatever, to get to this point. So, I want to have an understanding, and I know there was probably soft language in the original agreements. I don't think Alex crafted that agreement. So, as we're thinking about what the building was like in two thousand and ten relative to how it is now, I don't know if there's anybody that can speak to that historically. What it, has there been serious degradation of that? Maybe we can hear in public comment because I know some people sitting out here have been around and have been up there. But is that building kind of how it was in two thousand and ten? Or is it degraded quite a bit since then? Because it's, I can see the issues with it.
So, the mothball plan also included documentation of the structure at that time. So, we do have pictures from two thousand and ten where it's documented. The condition looks similar to today's. But those are the resources that we can give to the architect and also to the historical preservation historians that they can compare those photos back in two thousand and ten and incorporate that into the preservation plan.
And as I understand the mothball plan, it is until there is a plan in place. And that's kind of like we're waiting, and it sounds like we're getting to a plan. The plan could be, to me, it's another binary issue here, right? We can approve this, it could be moved, or we don't approve it and it stays on the private property and it's no longer mothballed and it has to be, it has to be rebuilt, really. When I looked at it, there's, again, there's no foundation. There's, it'd be a safety hazard to not have a foundation. So, I'm kind of getting to the point that when I read the language, it feels like it's, it feels very drastic. Just, you know, demolish and then rebuild a replica. But I think at the end of the day, it's going to be demolished and rebuild a replica anyway? I'm asking a question here because as I look at it, how do you fix that so it's a safe building on somebody's residential property without maybe having to really kind of demolish it down to the ground and maybe saving the pieces and then kind of rebuilding around that rock fireplace? I don't see any other way around a replica. So, is that true? Is that how you see it? That's how I, I'm not an expert in this, so that's how I see it. But I want to hear from experts what, kind of what the options are.
Yeah, that's when we come to the conclusion that there is no way to stabilize or give it the structure sound backbone to it. Either when we, we can either rebuild on site or it has to be rebuilt somewhere else.
Okay, and I think, you know, the plan is if there's a move, it will be, it'll be built right neck, the replica will be built next to it on that, kind of on the same, on Lot eighteen. And we will use as much as we can, or you will use as much as you can rather if this is approved, of existing materials. And then at that point, it will be moved down to Mount Wilson Trail Park. Hopefully, there, you know, there will be grading and a pad there. And so, effectively, it will have a foundation at that point in time. But, so, that's kind of the same situation that would probably have to happen even if we don't take, if we don't take ownership of this building and stays private property, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that would be the best way to to construct a replica when you have something that you can look at and reconstruct that right next to it.
Before your follow-up, it's because when I read, I want that to happen regardless. And when I read the agreement, the agreement for the Carter Barn specifically states to use as much of the existing resources as they can. It does not say that for the Macombur Cabin. So, I would like language in there wherever we land on it for this updated settlement agreement to the extent possible. And I know there's historical reports and, you know, we're going to have to look at the building, but to the extent possible, a good faith effort be put in that the existing materials be used when they can be. So, that's, I guess that's a question or a comment? That's a question. Could that happen?
Well, mine is perfectly segwayed with that because, and that's section four and section five. Section four states that the site plan review will be by the city for review and comment by the city planning commission. And section five says historic preservation plan. CETT will submit a historic preservation plan to the city detailing the methods and materials used to preserve the historic nature of Macombur Cabin. And at the planning meeting, we discussed, the planning commission really wanted to see input from the Sierra Madre Historical Society in that phase. And during these phases, it's kind of a checkoff of like what has been preserved. So, how, my question, I guess, would be, how are we going to include that? Do we give special, would it be during planning commission? And we would give special notice to Sierra Madre Historical Society and present them with information so they can come to the meeting and give their input? I mean, I'm not sure how that works because I'm new.
We would love to invite the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society to the planning commission. And this plan will also have to be presented to the community services department because it's on a public park.
Okay, another question, now kind of moving over to Mount Wilson Trail Park. I also did, not too far from my house, I see it all the time, but I specifically went under the view of what, where everything is going to kind of fit. And looking at that Italian stone pine, the picture doesn't really show, but it is right on the sidewalk. And I think I did see a trunk about that big that had recently been cut. Presumably, it fell and it had been, had been, you know, repurposed of some sort. So, thinking of that tree, that tree, I'm assuming will have to go. We have, we will, hopefully, if that does happen, we'll replant at least, hopefully, a couple of trees. And also, before we talk about the tree, I'm thinking about that site. There's a bunch there that looks like it has a dedication on that. What is, what is the, what will happen to that? And then also, the well needs a little work, and hopefully, that well will stay. And are we, we have plans for the well as well, well as well?
The well is planned to be, stay intact. Yeah, we will not be touching the well and as far.
I know that was a compound question, and I apologize, but.
As far as for the trees, we'll have management and the list.
And the bench, what about the bench? Both trees and bench?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, when we were reviewing this planet, the first part, it was, first initial reaction is, boy, you'd hate to lose a fairly good-looking large tree. And you're correct, though. What you saw was a cut was the result of after a break. We went back in there to try to give it a smooth cut. And Director Emeritus Semino and I, we recalled that there was another substantial break, and we're guessing six or seven years ago. So, we instructed the people that were asking us that we would be amenable to removing that tree and perhaps planting something native that would frame the new Heritage Square theme that we're looking at. That could be native oaks or something that kind of maybe bring that whole area look, looking, you know, in a nice way. The memorial bench, we believe it probably would be have to move. We're not exactly sure. We haven't pinpointed. What we would do in that occasion is try to reach out to any surviving members of the family or anything like that. Talk to them about another location, and, you know, perhaps we add a tree to the bench too to make up for the stone pine that we'll be losing.
Thank you for that, Management Analyst Carlson. Let me see, I think, at any rate, whatever happens with this cabin, on Lot eighteen, I would like to see a plaque there that commemorates that that was the original location. Is that a question? Can we put a plaque? Sorry, I, I'm not trying to get ahead of the public, with the public hearing here. Can we put a, is it possible to put a plaque there regardless of what happens to commemorate maybe both Carter Barn and Macombur Cabin on Lot eighteen?
That is an option. Is the architect, owner amenable to that?
I think that's doable because we still need to rebuild the cabin because the cabin is something that we can rebuild and become habitable duelling unit unlike the barn house, right? The barn house can be repurposed and rebuilt to be a duelling unit and use it as a house. But the cabin cannot, so we have to move that. So, we could have a plaque there to mention the bomb and mention the relocation of the cabin to.
Yeah, if you've gone through town, you've seen, we have many historical plaques that commemorate. Most of them are existing structures, but some of them were where things had been. So, hopefully, that can continue because those streets are part of our community as well. So, hopefully, you're amenable and the owner's amenable to that.
Right. I think that's the whole purpose that we want to do there is to become, giving a new purpose to the cabin, not just sitting there for, become a storage.
Thank you, and I think, I think that's all I have on questions. I don't know, are we satisfied to hear the reason why it has to be a rebuild rather than kind of moving what's existing? Do we need more explanation on that before we go to the public hearing? No? Councilmember Parkers, anything else?
I just have one quick thing to quick. So, that grade, this would be more for planning. planning, that grade is, is on Hillside Ordnance, so therefore the grade has to be a certain,
It's a settlement agreement.
It's a settlement, but I'm saying the grade of the land right there is, is not flat. So I'm guessing that if we just left it there and it would just continue to erode around underneath it, and we let the tree grow through it, that would even be more harsh, I'm guessing.
The, the, the cabin has a multiple disaster there, once a termite, we have a bear going there to just lean on the structure, we have the tree that was continued growing and pushing the structure. So it's, it's a lot of issue there, so that's.
You know, I do have a follow-up question, now, now, now we're talking about the building. What do, I, I want to see what we're envisioning here. Is this, because what you described, it's not going to be something that visitors can then enter and then look at, because someone like me, I'd have to fold myself in half to get in there. So are we envisioning just an exterior structure that it's to look at? Because Richardson House of both Lizzie's, you can enter, and that's, that's part of the charm of those two. This would be, would we try to raise it and make it available? Or would it just be something to kind of look at from the outside?
Mayor, I think that's, we would have input from our Historic Preservation Society, but from what I understand, the, the ceiling height is only five feet, so I don't know how accessible it's going to be to, to go inside of it. I'm sure that the doorways and windows would be made to where people can see inside.
Okay, like a boat, like Bodie, Ghost Town type thing, okay. I can envision that now. Thank you, thank you. Any more questions? If not, I'd like to open the public hearing. Okay, now I'd like to open the public hearing to hear testimony from the public. I really encourage individuals that are associated with the Historical Preservation Society to make comment. I'd like to hear what you would have to say, as well as, as all residents. So at this time, the public hearing is open. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Carol Canterbury.
Hi, Carol Canterbury. I'm at forty-six Victoria Lane. I just wanted to make sure that the, so I guess the barn will be salvaged and made into some kind of living quarter? Because that's what I, that's the part where I, I couldn't tell from the newspaper article and then from today's report. And then the bench is Jim Heasley and his granddaughter's up in Oregon. So I'm still in contact with her all the time. And what was the other? Oh, and then to make sure that Lizzie's, with all this going on, will Lizzie's get the roof? My pet peeve for six years. But will, will that, hopefully that would happen. And then, yeah, and then the quorum, we would move it down. I, I know, and then also there, that trail, we've made it, I think, what was it, ten years? There was a trail behind Lizzie's Trail Inn. It's only like a little bit, remember? What was it, ten years ago? Anyway, it was, it was part of the original trail of Mount Wilson Trail, the actual Mount Wilson. And so they made it from behind Lizzie's, and it came down, and then there's a no parking sign now, and that's where it came down. Now it looks like a coyote thing. But it, but that, and I don't know if that's going to be saved, even though no one uses it anymore. Is it something that just disappears or what? So those are my questions. And they were like part of the, the historical, I want to say it was ten years ago, but I'm not for sure. So those are my questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Can- Mrs. Canterbury. We'll, we'll try to answer some of those after the meeting and maybe during our discussion, some of those will get, will get, answers will get raised, but thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Diane Sands.
Well, good evening to all of you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protown Council Members and City Staff. My name is Diane Sands. I am the Vice President and Curator of the Historical Society. When the Historical Society was approached about the possibility of relocating the cabin down next to Richardson, we were very amenable to it. We were pretty excited about it. But we were actually approached about moving the cabin. Now that we hear that, and we probably need to be realistic about it, that if we save ten percent of the cabin, if we save twenty percent of the cabin, what we're going to end up with is a replica. And a little disturbing to some of us is the fact that what is the good of having a replica, which is not historical, next to historical buildings? It seems as though with money being the point of most everything, is it easier for the contractor and everybody to say, we couldn't salvage that much? We could only salvage five percent of the cabin. They'll spend less money by just bringing the bulldozer in, plowing it down, and we'll be stuck with a replica next door to us. So that is a concern to us. Also, we'd like to see the Historical Resources Technical Report. No one can seem to find it. Everybody looks and we can't find it. And I do have a question for you. It's probably more of a moot thing, but during the Marinatha Development Era, before One Carter, before Stonehenge, Stonehenge, yeah, Stone Gate, Stonehenge is probably more appropriate, right? And during discussions of the final E I R, there was a staff report in November of two thousand and one that mentioned a historic conservation easement. And I'm just curious if anything like that was ever added into any subsequent agreement when the land changed hands each time. So that's just a, a question of mine. And I do want to mention that Lizzie's Trail Inn, when it was resurrected in the nineties, it didn't have a foundation. We did a fundraising plan, we got volunteers, we put a new foundation into Lizzie's. So it can be done. I mean, buildings can be saved. It was in pretty shabby shape, but Dr. White led a lot of us on a, a mission, and we did it. And the last point is, some of your dates are erroneous on your report. Lizzie's Trail Inn does not date to eighteen eighty. So if you ever want to check dates, please come see me. We'll be happy to help. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Sands.
Mr. Mayor, Jeff Lapides.
Good evening. I am Jeff Lapides, four sixty West Montecito. And I just wanted to express my concern of some of the language in the proposal. I hate the fact that the word demolition is used repeatedly instead of deconstruction. It just really opens a door to demolishing. And that's not the idea. The, the more that this transplanted structure in Mount Wilson Trail Park is distanced from the original materials and structure, the less important this becomes. It really becomes, just in my mind, a use of taxpayers' dollars that's not even worthwhile, because to have a, a five-foot-tall interior building that is not accessible and it's not even the McComber Cabin. And if we just slap on five or ten percent of siding and calling that the McComber Column, that's, cabin, that is a disservice, in my mind, to... My next thought, which is the Heritage Park concept. Heritage Square, the Los Angeles Heritage Square, which is just a magnificent thing to visit, there are no reproductions on that property. Those are all original buildings, eight of which were there, and the rest of them were transported there, painstakingly transported. And if we want to painstakingly transport the McComber Cabin, that would be great. But to just end up with tacky, tacked-on old boards that may still have termite, still, who knows what? Are we going to tent the thing annually? I don't know what we're going to do. I would love to see the McComber Cabin relocated, but not next door to its current site, but as a whole brought to the park. And I know there are going to be replacement of materials, I understand that. But to just, you know, it's in the, it's the word that is being used in the proposal, demolition, I don't think that's acceptable, and I don't think that's what the, the park needs, is just a replica. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lapides.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is John Capocha.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, and members of the City Council. And, yeah, John Capocha, ninety-one West Highland. And I'm also a board member on the Historical Society, and I do echo the comments that were made that originally we were very excited about this when we understood it to be a relocation. So I want to just commend the City Council and C E T T as well for considering this project. And, you know, a lot of the questions I had have been answered through this discussion. A concern, though, is that maybe we're jumping to conclusions here. I didn't hear in the discussion that there was any expertise or third-party, you know, restoration consultant or historic building consultant that would have determined that it is not possible to move this. I'm still not sure that that's the case after listening to this, this discussion. So when this comes back to the Planning Commission, I hope that's addressed very thoroughly. And again, the issues that are brought up here is maybe there is not value in having a five-foot reconstructed structure as part of this Heritage Park. I think we need more discussion about that. Again, I do know that our city code and our general plan does encourage adaptive reuse, and perhaps, you know, it's a possibility that it could be raised up enough to where it could be used as a viable structure and not just something that you look at from the outside. That would not be inconsistent with our general plan and use of historic buildings and renovation of it. One thing, though, that does bother me, and I'm not, certainly not blaming anybody here because I was on the council for eight years and tried to get this answered repeatedly and never was able to do that, but apparently it's clear now that there was a plan and an obligation to, to maintain this in perpetuity. And that's, I'm reading this from the staff report. Well, obviously, that wasn't done. Now, what obligation, you know, what should have been done, we haven't seen the language, it was not attached to the staff report here. But obviously, C E T T had an obligation that was not fulfilled. And so if we were to move forward and, you know, rebuild the structure and move it, I just want to be sure that, you know, it's not done in a slipshod, cheap way, because they had an obligation to, to maintain this, and perhaps if that obligation was fulfilled, we'd have more useful parts to it and perhaps could have been able to move it over as a whole. So I think we need to delve into that a little bit. And I just want to be sure that we're, the city here is not being short-changed. At the same time, I think this is extremely beneficial to C E T T because it allows them development of that property. Oh, I'm sorry, my time's up. Okay.
You saw my face.
Okay, anyway, thank you for consideration of this, and I'm just really thrilled that there is some action to try to resolve this. I don't think that's an acceptable thing to have it bulldozed and have just a marker put on the property.
Thank you for Mayor Capocha.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Deb Sheridan.
Good evening, good evening, Council Members. Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. And apparently I'm going to be redundant, thank you all. What a shock that you are considering tearing down McComber Cabin located at One Carter. Saving this historic property was negotiated with C E T T developers in two thousand and five with our City Council. Its importance documented in the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society's newsletter written by award-winning architect Joe Catalino, former planning commissioner. The first question that comes to mind is, this is listed under public hearing. Under discussion, it says this is a consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine. Is this, in fact, the actual public hearing? If so, why wasn't the public given better notification for something of such significance? C E T T was required to maintain this property in perpetuity, quote-unquote. They certainly have not done a very good job of maintaining it since two thousand and five, you saw the pictures. The plan that you are considering to tear it down and rebuild it in another location, how does rebuilding something preserve it? Obviously, it doesn't. Your staff report states that this is not under sequo because it is relocation of historic resources. No, it isn't. It's being torn down, and there are very specific requirements for restoring historic buildings. To add insult to injury, C E T T promised to pay for the relocation, and yet the cost is estimated at two hundred thousand dollars, but the developer will pay only a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Plus, now the maintenance will be entirely on the city, in other words, we taxpayers. You were planning on calling this Heritage Square. Another insult, Heritage Square Museum is along the one-ten freeway, and its Victorian houses, church, and train station were moved, not torn down and replicated. And the last, the last question, oh, and where, where will the cabin go, by the way? It appears to me that you'll be cutting into Turtle Park. The last question is, what will happen to the barn at One Carter? Will it suffer the same fate? And by the way, I have to thank you, Council Members, for asking very relevant questions, and I thank you for that. And thank you for listening to me once again.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Mr. Mayor, the I T Department has informed me that there are no commenters in the queue, and that was the last speaker card received.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to, close, close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and consideration.
Can I ask a quick question before? It's not really a discussion, it's a question. So C E T T was not, I, I remember when Marinatha came through, and I remember all that phase. And then I remember there were a lot of things going on, and that's when Hillside Ordnance came in. When did, who, where did, I know there was a con- a contract or an agreement, I've heard about, at least, I don't know. And was that agreement different than what we currently have? And who were the owners of that property, and where did that all? Like, what was the history of that?
So I think the first part of your question, I think, is when did C E T T take over this property? So C E T T, so in twenty tw- in twenty twelve, C E T T Investments Corporation became successor in interest to C S One Carter LLC. So that was in twenty twelve, and they submitted their applications in twenty twelve.
Wait, before, before we get to beyond that, if they were a successor, then when did the predecessor obtain their rights? Because they would probably relate back, right?
The predecessor in interest,
C S One Carter, right?
C S, yeah, C S One Carter LLC obtained.
They were successor in interest as well, weren't they?
Correct.
What years were they?
C S One Carter LLC took this over in two thousand and eight.
So they were the parties to the lawsuit that resulted in the settlement?
That's right, in the, the twenty-ten settlement. Before C S One Carter LLC, it was a, a company called One Carter LLC, and before One Carter LLC, it was Marinatha High School.
When did Marinatha end?
Marinatha sold to One Carter LLC and Stonehouse Homes LLC in two thousand and five.
And that's when the original settlement agreement, there was a, the first settlement agreement happened around that time?
The first settlement agreement ha- happened in, it was, was it twenty-ten? Well, depends which lawsuits you're talking about.
That's the lawsuits, okay.
The, the active lawsuits for which, right now, there are the tolling agreements for? The active lawsuits for which right now there are the tolling agreements for, for Stone House, is the 2010 lawsuit, is the 2010 settlement agreement. The active settlement agreement that we have now for Stone Gate, that's the 2018 settlement agreement.
So the referenced agreement in 2005 that was found in, that was that? How, I don't know how, do those types of things follow along with the next successor or what?
I don't, I don't actually know which document, the 2005 document is in reference to. So I'd have to, I'd have to speak to that public commenter to figure out what they're referencing specifically.
But that's when the mothball.
That was 2010.
Oh, that was 2000, yes, that's right.
2010 was the mothball.
Condition, the conditions were in '05.
The, the conditions, the tentative tract map and the conditions that were adopted were adopted in 2005, that's right.
That's right, okay.
Or November 2001, too. Those were another date thrown out, so, okay, just trying to track that.
Yeah, I don't know about November 2001, but per this timeline I have in front of me, 2005 is when the tract map and the conditions of approval were adopted.
That was according to Planner Lynn's presentation in my notes here, yeah.
Well, and then, just to be clear, then the 2010 settlement agreement was in settlement of litigation, right? This wasn't some agreement that the city willingly entered into, but it was in settlement of, of active litigation, correct?
Correct.
So in terms of those terms, and maybe we have Planning Manager Lynn give us a little bit more detail about the mothballing. But my understanding was that that's, the obligation there was pretty minimal. It was to, I don't know, I don't, I don't, sort of, maybe you can comment a little bit on what the scope of that, those obligations were.
Yeah, the mothball plan of 2010 was to preserve the structures on site. And it includes several requirements. It include documentation, stabilization, and mothballing. So those were listed. And pictures were taken for documentation. And mothballing is to secure the building from vandalism or break-ins. And it's for the developer to develop a maintenance plan and monitoring plan.
And can I add two clarifications for council? With, with respect to that property and maintenance of that site, that's going to run with the land. So once the developer develops what they want to develop, and if they sell that property, that obligation is then going to, is going to enter to the, whoever purchases that property. So some future residential homeowner, who, we don't know who that person is, but we'll have to deal with if that, we'll have to deal with it for the Carter Barn. And if the McComber Cabin stays on site, we'll have to deal with that property owner for the McComber Cabin, too. For the Carter Barn, there was a question about it. It's been presented at the Planning Commission meetings, but basically, that Carter Barns is going to be incorporated into the design of the residential development at that site. So it's going to be preserved and it's going to be used for that residential purpose. So the Carter Barns fate is contemplated differently than McComber Cabin. The other point that was raised, I just want to clarify, was regarding costs borne by the taxpayers. This does not contemplate any cost borne by taxpayers. The $200,000 estimate incorporates the costs associated with the Lizzie's Trail Inn and the Richardson House. Those costs exceed the $70,000 that we had initially anticipated. That had been budgeted for. So if anything, this is going to result in a cost savings to taxpayers. No taxpayer funds are going to be used for the, if, if there's going to be a replica developed, the, the construction of a replica, the transportation of it, the installation of it at that site. And by the way, the $200,000 also contemplates some maintenance, 10 years of maintenance expenses.
So after 10 years, then it would induce into, into taxpayers, possibly?
After 10 years, correct, for maintenance-related expenses, not for, not for the costs contemplated in this development agreement.
So wait, so, sorry, that, that, go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
Would it be 10 years, so if the McComber Cabin, Cabin stayed in its, in its place? And so there's an agreement for 10 years worth of maintenance on it? But then the maintenance fall to whoever, the owner is of that property at that time?
The, no, so the maintenance that we're contemplating in this development agreement, if it's moved to the, to the park, would fall upon the city? And if the.
I'm saying if, I'm saying if the Cabin stayed in its current location and there's, and there's 10 years, is there, who would have to maintain the Cabin? So the developer's got to maintain it now. A house would be built on that property after the developer sells that house? Is that where there's, is there easement? Like, is there a requirement that would have to maintain that Cabin after the developer relinquishes ownership of that property?
Yeah, I believe it's run, run with the land and also the H O A put the responsibility on the property owner to maintain the Carter Barn and also the McComber Cabin.
Then that's where the easement is. The easement is, it is on maintaining that property in perpetual, it's perpetual.
It's not, it's not an easement.
It's not an easement.
There's no easement.
It's like, it's like a restriction on the.
Right, it's, it's.
Okay, it's a, okay, it's different, okay.
It's, it's part of the, the C C N Rs for that property. And the owner of Lot 18, whoever the owner of Lot 18 is would be responsible for it. If it, if it were to be moved, that responsibility will fall on the city? And it would remain with the city unless the agreement with the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society is amended to incorporate that into their list of obligations.
So yeah, the, the way I see it is that if it moves, obviously, it's our, it's up, it's up to us. If it stays, the mothball plan is, is gone either way because a plan has to be put in place. And I feel as though, and I've seen the plans for the Carter Barn for Lot 18. But once that plan comes to the Planning Commission, there needs to be a plan in place on a go-forward basis for also for the McComber Cabin, Cabin, if we don't go forward with, with this resolution and, and amendment, so.
What's, what's driving that obligation?
Because they're, they're, the mothball is supposed to be temporary. And then it goes, when there's a plan in place, and I feel as though the Planning Commission would say there needs to be a plan in place before we, we approve Lot 18. I think that would be one of the restrictions on it.
So the Planning Commission, when, when I was at a meeting where they approved the, the property for, for the build that's on, where the, where the barn is, the barn is incorporated into the next home. And it's not its current barn. It is a reconstruction. It's not even a reconstruction, it's a, it's a redo. It's, it's in its replica. And, and as much as maintained as possible, but it's, it's also very decrepit. And it's been more decrepit than, than this property at times.
Can we just get back to something here? Former Mayor Capoja laid it out. I mean, we, do we know that this building cannot be restored? Because to me, if we can't answer that question, I don't think I'm ready to make a decision on this tonight. And I'd like to know if we really know or not. I feel Mr. Lepidus, Mr. Capoja raised a very valid question here. I mean, if we could, if we could, I feel like we need to reconsider the, the whole cost of this thing. My guess is, if it could be done, it's going to cost a lot more than what we're talking about, right? I mean. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm not an expert in restoration. So it could be less.
What is, the, the, the development agreement calls for, what do we call it? A historic preservation plan? What, what was sort of the scope of that as, as anticipated? I mean, is that sort of what we're talking about here? Although it does seem timing-wise not to be in the right order. But is, is that, or I guess I'm not clear exactly what that was supposed to cover if it, you know, if it wasn't covering part of these, this question.
So the Planning Commission raised the same question. And they desire a technical expert to, you know, evaluate the, the preservation plan or the relocation plan. That's why that was added to the development agreement. It's for the developer to hire. I think they already have a contract with the Sapples Environmental for them to evaluate the method.
Can I follow up with that then? So, so you've already contemplated this. So what, you're, you're willing to enter an agreement where you may find that your costs are higher than you're anticipating and you're, you're going to go ahead and honor that agreement? Is that what we're hearing here?
He's agreeing to $125,000.
Well, I, I just want to get clear. If we find out that this building is a, can be restored without, you know, playing around 5% or 10% of the material, but we can actually have a real restoration, you guys are on board for doing that, is that correct?
You talked about the cabin or the.
Cabin.
The cabin, yes. So we, we did our first round evaluation already. And the building cannot be repurposed by just restoring or repair or retrofit. That's why we come up with this plan to replicate the building and use as much as possible the existing materials here to, to the new structure, right? So that, that was the idea coming from. But without further, another degree of study, we're not sure, just like a lot of comments here, that we're not sure exactly how many percentage of that material can be used. I think today's meeting is to approve that big idea to move on to the next stage for the Planning Commission and us to work together with the historical preservation community to work out a better plan. Everybody can join that workshop to figure out how we can do it. Because that will take a very long time to figure out exactly what needs to be done and what can be done. And right now, we just don't have that much time to continue doing that thorough discussion. And it might take another year or so, we're not sure, hopefully not. But again, we are trying to approve this big picture to move on to the next. We have been stuck in this situation for years. And we have no solution until now that we have one window here that we can relocate this, donate this to the city, has a better purpose of this historical piece.
Have you had anybody analyze it yet?
We have a first draft of the historical report by Sapples, our historical consultant.
Are they a company that does this?
They did it in 2004.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, Councilmember Goss.
So I, I sense good faith here. And I really want to compliment our staff for really thinking outside of the box. When I first saw this, it seems like it's, it's too good to be true because we can preserve something and we can help you guys get your property developed, which is, you've been very patient on. So in theory, I'm with you on this idea. But it, it really hinges on whether or not we can actually restore this building. Because I, I agree with what I've heard here. I don't know if I really want to create a Heritage Square where we have a replica building. It seems like the historical experts in the room here probably don't want that.
Yeah, I, I believe the, just like the, the previous comment, by wording demolish and, and replica is kind of scare a lot of historian people. Say, hey, 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 this is not original. We understand that, that's what, maybe we can fine-tune the wording to whatever everybody feel comfortable to retrofit and repair that building as much as possible by replacing structural remembers and rebuilding the foundation, something. We can start it from there until we know that's a mission impossible, then we come up with another solution for that. Not the other way around to start rebuild this and then call it a day. I think that might be a better direction to make this, everybody happy. That is still original, but it has some new parts, of course, because just the way it is now.
So you're talking about something, language that might make it closer to a restoration than just kind of a.
We can start it from there.
Reconstruction.
Right, right, or the, yeah, reconstruction. I think that might be a better wording for that one, yeah. Or restore to.
Do I, I have a question. So we've got draft reports in Sapples. It has, it's, it wasn't included in our packet. Have we seen any of the historical assessments of this?
I believe that was the only report that we've done. While the previous developer did a long time ago. And then we kind of taking that over to, to that. The staff was only doing on historical valley evaluation, not the structural evaluation of the existing building. So we hire another third party of a structural engineer to investigate the building. And we found out there's no foundation, of course. And there's no slab for the, for the floor. And all the structural member has even been termite issue and decay. And it just cannot be structurally sound.
So did that structural engineer, did they have any experience in preserving historic buildings?
Preserving historical building, I need to double check. But they do a lot of retrofit for structural retrofit buildings, yes.
Yeah, but that's, that's, I mean, I would feel more comfortable if we had some more. Like, I, I, I am not convinced that the historical nature of this has been taken into account. Like, I love the concept, I love the idea. But I'm, I'm concerned, and I've, I've heard this from multiple members of the public tonight, that the potential to move this, I'm not convinced that it's not possible to move yet. I, I, I'm not quite at that point.
I, I.
It, it looks like it's in bad shape. It's got a low ceiling, it doesn't have a foundation, I understand all of that. But, but I'm not hearing any historical expertise that's being pulled into this that's looking at the relocation of historic buildings and whether or not that's been assessed.
Well, that, that was the idea when we are presenting to these planning commissioners that this is going to be a long-term evaluation. So they, they, they recommending the approval a couple of weeks ago to move this forward with this big idea that we can relocate this cabin to the city-owned park. That was the big idea. And then all the detail that we still need to figure, figure it out during the next meeting. After we approve, if we approve today.
Yeah, but you know, the, the language in the First Amendment to the amended and reinstated declaration in Section 2, Paragraph 2, this is, this is the language, and I'm expected to sign this tonight, right? If passed. "To the extent feasible, original," here's the Carter Barn part. "To the extent feasible, the original exterior materials of the Carter Barn shall be reused, salvaged, and reinstalled. And to the extent such salvage and reuse is not feasible, the exterior character defining standards for treatment of historic properties with guidelines for preserving, rehabilitating, restoring, and reconstructing historical buildings." Talks about "The Willis Residence shall be retained in accordance with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation." Here comes the McComber Cabin. "The McComber Cabin shall be demolished and a replica shall be constructed, reflecting the historical features as described in the June 23, 2004 final historical sources to technical report prepared by Sapples Environmental. The replica shall be relocated to Mount Wilson Trail Park." And there, to me, there's a lot of care taken in the part regarding Carter Barn, but there's not the same kind of care taken in that statement for the Cabin.
Well, and I also just feel like we're, I mean, again, I don't mean this to be a pun. We're sort of putting the cart before the horse or before the barn. I mean, if we're looking to get a historical, and I forget how exactly we phrased it, but historical report of some sort, what is it, sorry, a historic preservation plan, why wouldn't we start with that? Like, it's weird to me to then have that be part of the agreement that you'll do it in due, due course, you know, as part of the timeline. But then we're not, then actually seeing the results of that and then have the ability to adjust the plan, the cost. I mean, like, like to the mayor's point, you know, we're expected to sign this agreement tonight. And this agreement's going to be binding irrespective of what the historic preservation plan says. And so it seems to me that the sequencing here is, is off. And I think that's a lot of what everybody's saying, is that we almost need this historic preservation plan, you know, as we've talked about, before we actually determine the terms of this agreement.
Yeah, I agree. And I want, and I want to, I want to kind of expand on what you said earlier, Councilmember Goss, is that.
We're not going to do live edits tonight, right?
No, I don't have a, I don't have an appetite for that. But I do want to say is that I've watched, I've watched the Planning Commission meetings and I've seen you present. And relative to what we've seen in recent history, you've been very amenable to the Planning Commission. And we're not, we're not here to try to slow you down because you've been acting in good faith, that's what I've been saying. And I want to commend you for that. And I want to commend the Planning Commission for, you know, for, for their work as well. But I think big picture, and historically, we have seen this, this is not meant to be a pun, but we have seen the Historical Society come before us when we're talking about the Trail Inn and the Richardson House. And their goal is for this resource to be long-lasting. They are volunteers, and they are the current volunteers. Whether or not someone will fill the bench, that's, remains to be seen, but we hope that happens. And if the current volunteers don't have a taste for having a replica in the park, I, I can't, I can't see why we would go through this process and do it. So we, I think we need to take a little bit of time, not to slow you down. But if, if it takes, if it's just marginally more expensive to take Plank 1, that's 1, and 2, and 2, and take everything down piece by piece and then rebuild it? And that's, if, if that's something that, that the Historical Society would, would appreciate rather than trying to pick the whole thing up, because that's not going to happen? I think we need to take the time to. um, I think we need to take the time to slow down before we, we do any of this to make sure that happens. I, I do have a taste to extend the settlement agreement for two years, but as far as the cabin and the Heritage Park part, I, I'm not, um, prepared to, um, to close this, this public hearing and, um, and have, have that issue finalized yet. That's where I sit, and hopefully it's okay with you, but I'm, that's, that's how, I'm one of five, and that's how I'm sitting right now.
I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, like I said, I think we need to see what the results of this plan or this assessment or whatever, whatever it is, and what, what that says about the feasibility of moving, although I agree that it, that seems unlikely, or, you know, some sort of more formal restoration versus a replica-type situation. And it ma- and it's possible, because this is sort of the law of, of, of the way it goes. It may come back that, no, what we've, what we've talked about tonight is probably-
The best solution.
The vi- most viable or only viable, and, you know, we don't know. But, but I don't, I don't feel qualified to make that assessment just based on, you know, sort of pictures and descriptions, or even if you've, you know, been there, like, I'm not an expert in this, so I couldn't possibly say, oh, yeah, sure, no, that can't happen.
And I feel the timeline ha- has a little bit of, uh, the accelerator pretty heavy, coming from like, a report six months out to the building being finished nine months out. And that's, that's a three-month window. I mean, that, that's a lot of, that's a pretty tight timeline, and I don't know that we even want something that's built in three months, right? So-
Right.
Um, I know some of it could be concurrent, but again, I think a lot would hinge on that report, so we'd have to wait, and then three months later, that has to be built. That timeline seems a little, little fast and aggressive for me as well.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
I think, I think too, I've, I've been to the planning commission with you, and I appreciate all that you do with all the different lots and, and how well it's, it's going. It's been a great relationship with C E T T, which has not been the same in the, in the past with the other property owners-
Thank you.
-prior to you. Um, and I was thinking about all the different historical cities and buildings that they've done. They've done, um, the Arboretum has done this, where they also had to rebuild the walls and then put the, the exterior of what was there, what's feasible, onto the walls and reconstruct because it, it was going to fall, and you couldn't go in it anymore. Now you can go in it and view it, versus, say, Glendale, they rebuilt their tee house, and they actually rebuilt it as a replica, so in nineteen, to the nineteen, in nineteen seventy-five, I believe. So it's, it's, I've seen it done in different cities as well as in, um, in Los Angeles, and I'm hoping we can find something that is true, more true to our history, because we are a very new country, and we're very new on the west coast compared to the east coast, and if we don't preserve these buildings as they were, then we won't have anything, because we are, we, I mean, it's, it's only a hundred, a hundred years old. You know, our country's not the oldest country, so we'd like to preserve these as they were, if possible. And maybe stop, we'll have to do better at preventing these from becoming so decrepit over time.
So where are we? Do we have any more questions for, um, Representative C E T T? Councilmember Parkers, you, are you satisfied for now to make some kind of decision tonight? As far as maybe, uh, punting this to a date uncertain, but I don't know where we're, we do, I think we do have to make a decision on the settlement agreement, um, because that will expire in December.
So, so let me just, since you kind of kicked it in my direction, let, let me build off of that. So I, I'm in agreement with, with the comments of the other members of the council, and I really appreciate all the thoughtfulness that's gone into it, appreciate the thoughtfulness of the developer. Now, I, I'm wondering, and, uh, I'll direct this to staff, is, is, we've got three things that are part of this resolution, and I'm wondering, because the, um, the First Amendment, uh, terminates, I think, in, in December, December thirteenth, just what's sticking in my mind, if we can, if we can sever this and keep the development agreement out of the, the resolution, and then adopt the other two parts of it, and so maybe city attorney, is it, would that accomplish what, what the conversation is going here? Does that accomplish getting to where we're trying to go, and you can slow down the McComber Cabin, Cabin, but not, uh, but also keep the, um, development agreement moving for, or the, sorry, the, the amendment going forward for the rest of, of the properties?
Right, that, that's right, Councilmember. We, we brought all three items of the council all together, because the council is going to see one related to, uh, Stone Gate, one Carter, so we thought, let's bring these two items together, so they get a more comprehensive look about what this, what this development, uh, might be going forward. However, uh, we can definitely segregate these two. So the, the First Amendment to the, uh, restated Declaration of, to the C C N Rs and the development agreement, those two are related to each other, and those can't be separated. Uh, so those, we can put to one side for now, and the, the city council can choose to, um, consider the Third Amendment to the settlement agreement with C E T T separately.
And so the, the strikeout is just, um, kind of updating the, the, the dates? Um, there's, there's, I, I know there is, no, there's no language regarding any of those three, the Willis Estate, the, um, the Coburn Cabin, or, or the, uh, the Carter Barn. So this really just extends our settlement agreement that we currently have in place, um, with, with no, I'm kind of restating what we, what I already know, but I want to make sure the public understands that this agreement is just for the settlement to continue, whereas the, the first two documents, you, the C C N R and the, um, other amendment, have to do specifically with, with the majority of this discussion was about.
That's right. The amendment to the settlement agreement extends it out for two more years, so the applicant will have two additional years to s- uh, submit complete applications for all lots, uh, at one Carter.
Well, and I want to be fair. I mean, the two years that was negotiated for this extension, I assume was based in part on an assumption that perhaps the other two pieces that were perhaps tabling would be approved at the same time. And so I want to be fair to the developer, given, you know, their, their good faith. That two years is still sufficient, given that we've now maybe pushed out the timing, because now we're going to predicate, I think where we're going is we're going to predicate decision-making on the McComber Cabin to the receipt of the report, which I have no idea how long that takes. So I, I just want to be, you know, upfront, that like, I would be willing to entertain a longer extension if, if that is needed to accommodate what we've talked about on the other piece.
Or two years from now, there can be a Fourth Amendment, right?
Well, that's true too. But I, I just want to make sure that we're being transparent.
Yeah, we want to be transparent with you.
All right, all right. Uh, I appreciate that, because, um, before, we thought two years should be sufficient already, because we have a plan already, but now since like, uh, we do have different opinion or more thoughtful opinion into this, that how we can make this into everybody wants, right? Which is the most important. So, uh, if the Fourth Amendment for the other two years, fine, I, I'm okay with that, or we can just make this four-year or three-year, uh, extension. I, I think that's doable to me too, because right now, uh, we do have another six or, uh, seven lot that's been submitted to the city other than Lot eighteen, just because the Lot eighteen become, uh, more critical right now. That's why the other five or six kind of put on hold. We cannot move forward yet. But once we kind of engage into a further study of the Lot eighteen, the, the solution, how we're going to do that, and then the other five or six can continue moving, I think we can see the progress of moving things and getting that Lot eighteen, uh, resolution kind of kicking ahead. Because for the longest time, the Lot eighteen, we really don't know what to do with it because of the historical issue and the, uh, this almost very, very difficult. It's not just financial-wise, it's just like, it's almost cannot be done just because of structurally, and then also the co-issue too. We may do everything we could here to make historical, uh, work and everything else, but building co-comment, fire co-comment, say, hey, you guys cannot use it. Then what? Then, then we'll be just building something that we're going to sit there and decay again, because no one can live in there. So that's something that we, we can work out later on.
And by the way, it would remain on private property at that point.
Right, right. So I, I think at that point, the city doesn't have a control of the structures. The ones we locate that, at least, the, the city has a control, and then do whatever that needs to be done, yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think I want to extend this out four years.
No.
Um, that's not-
But, I, I don't think this is going to take two more years to just work through this process.
I think the two years sounds sufficient, and if, because he'll move forward with those other plans and then come back to this, instead of rushing forward with eighteen-
Mm-hmm.
-and then doing the other lots.
Right, right, yeah. And the only longer time would be needed just because the eighteen become the bottleneck, and then, you know, but if everything concurrently going, then I think two, maybe you can put-
Maybe a thirty, thirty months, um, adding another six months, hopefully maybe at that time-
You can do that, or add in another clauses, like, um, if the, the historical issue become, uh, unresolved issue, then we do have a option to extend another, whatever, time that is needed, yeah.
I, I, I recommend just to make the settlement agreement terms simple, that we just, if we're going to edit something, just add a, add a number.
Okay.
So if it's going to be two years, or it's going to be, so we're just putting in a date, basically.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
I mean, I would, I would, I would be fine, because it seems to me, and I, again, this is based on nothing other than just sort of how this process has gone, like, another sort of six months to sort of get, get the, get this plan in place, or, or, um, the, the, the plan submitted, um, and, and studied. That seems to me like if we move from twenty-four months to thirty months, that kind of accounts for that extra little bump in the road. And, you know, to, to your point, we can always extend it again, which we have already done twice.
Mm-hmm.
And with that part, I mean, I just, we would recommend having an analysis done by, uh, an architect or, or a group that deals with restoration, historical buildings.
Yeah, we don't need to, we don't need to vote on that, but we can give direction on that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, I'm-
I'm trying to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm pro- I'm proposing thirty months, and if, oh, please, uh-
If, if, if it is going to be an additional six months, then, uh, if I could recommend the edit be, instead of December thirteen, twenty twenty-five, June thirteen, twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six, sorry.
Yeah, so I can put that in the motion if you want. All right, so I will move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash sixty-nine with the amendment that we only include the Third Amendment to settlement agreement and release. And to that extent, we, uh, approve that amendment with the change of the, um, extension date to, um, June, what was the date?
Thirteen.
June thirteenth, um, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Oh, wait, wait, roll call. Sorry.
Hold on, can you, I, I, I had a hard time hearing, so could someone read back the motion? Because, uh, Councilmember Krebs, um, Mike was, is, I've got a little bit distortion on my end. I want to make sure I hear what I'm putting on.
Sure, yeah, no, it's, it's the resolution reduced to solely the Third Amendment to settlement agreement, and that settlement agreement as amended to extend the term until June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. So it's an amended resolution with an amended, uh, settlement agreement.
You, you got that, Councilmember Parkers?
I did, thank you for reading.
So we have a, a motion and a second. Are you good with that? Can I take a, the vote?
I'm good.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Edward Garcia, your vote?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Kelly Krebs?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember Christine Lo?
Aye.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, it's a unanimous vote approving Resolution twenty-three sixty-nine.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, um, for the hearing and, and for everybody's input. I appreciate it. I, I need to take a five-minute break before we go to the next, uh, item. Uh, is five minutes enough for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you.
I was like, I need to get a line added. Now, we can have a contact without an edit.
We've kept Miguel around long enough. We've, we've kept Miguel around long enough.
I'm literally whining right now. In my brain.
You love being laughs, huh?
I do, yes.
Well, it wasn't intended.
No, no, I know.
No, I didn't.
I've gotten, oh, you did. So, um, Laura. The, the part.
Do we continue it to a date uncertain? Do we have to reopen public comment? Are we only continuing to a date certain that cuts off public comment?
It's the noticing issue.
If you're continuing it, you've already made public comment, and you won't have to, but it's, it's a practice of this council, so. Or the noticing thing?
It's also noticing, yeah. All right, thank you for everyone's patience, um, let's get back on the agenda, reconvene the meeting. We have one more item, a discussion item, the consideration of Resolution twenty-three seventy adopting MOU between the City of Sierra Madre and the Police Association, and Resolution twenty-three seventy-one, amending the classification plan and salary matrix, adopting the amendments of the terms and conditions of employment for executive management and confidential exempt employees. And we have Assistant City Manager Hernandez, I think on the.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. Uh, as mentioned before you, today we have consideration of Resolution twenty-three seventy, which will adopt the memorandum of understanding with our Police Association, and Resolution twenty-three seventy-one, which will update the classification plan and salary matrix with the, uh, proposed changes, and also updating language in our terms and conditions of employment for executive management and confidential exempt employee. The, um, current MOU for the Police Association does expire in two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, there was a, uh, prior negotiations to have a re-opener for two items, uh, in this year. And, uh, earlier this year, we began, uh, budget discussions, and, uh, some of the projections we made, uh, were, uh, seven percent cost of living adjustment for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So we, uh, were able to budget that for this year in anticipation of the negotiations with the Police Association. So over the last several months, uh, we've been meeting with, meeting and conferring with our Police Association, uh, to come, uh, to terms with a, terms and conditions, uh, for the, uh, MOU, and those, uh, conditions were a, for a seven percent cost of living adjustment of, that will go into effect, uh, July second of, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and a five percent cost of living adjustment that will go into effect July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the city also, uh, agreed, the city and Police Association also agreed to amend the current education incentive from a percent-based of five percent to a flat rate of two fifty, only for those that have the post and, uh, an education. Currently, it's not com- combined, um, so if you have a post certificate, then you, the, and also an education, um, degree, then you don't get either one, you get, you get one, but not, uh, not both. This amendment will allow for both to be combined, however, those that have an education and a post, the education incentive will be a flat rate of two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, that would be paid out every twenty-eight days, uh, which is the FLSA cycle. Those that, uh, have an education incentive but have not yet obtained their post certificate will continue to receive the five percent, um, uh, above base salary for the education incentive. Once that employee, uh, obtains their advanced certificate, post certificate, then the five percent will change to a flat rate. So essentially, the, um, uh, the change to a flat rate will decrease the amount that is paid out to, uh, well, it'll, it'll help, cost savings for the city, uh, essentially, that's what it would come out to. Uh, once everyone is on a, a flat rate, then it does help the city, and it saves the city a little bit of money on that. Also, uh, one of the things that we, uh, put in there as well is the, for members of the Police Association who are, who will be retiring as a service retirement, the incentive to change the, um, the public safety holiday leave to be able to be cashed out at the time of retirement versus currently, the way it works is that you only get it cashed out at the end of the fiscal year. So if, uh, if a member of the Association is, uh, preparing to retire, and to, to get the benefit, uh, from this, they would have to wait until somewhere around May or June to retire in order to get that benefit with CalPERS. So allowing this, allowing the, uh, uh, public safety holiday leave to be cashed out for those, only for those who are retiring, service retirement, they can cash it out at any time, at the time of retirement, uh, which will, in a way, be a benefit for them. And in the next three or four years, it's anticipated that, you know, uh, these two or three members of the Police Department will be retiring. And, uh, in addition to the, uh, Police MOU ad- adoption, we also have the creation of a police sergeant, part-time police sergeant position. Currently, our part-time, uh, our Police Department utilizes part-time police officers, and we also have a part-time lieutenant, which is currently vacant, uh, to, to keep it consistent with all others, we are asking to, to adopt a, uh, new position of police sergeant, which will also help with, uh, the, the day-to-day operations, uh, the, also provide someone that comes in with some experience to help our current sergeants, or even our current officers, uh, and, uh, corporals for succession planning, and also provide some administrative support. And lastly, uh, city staff is recommending that the City Council approve the, uh, amendments, uh, to the terms and conditions of employment for executive management and confidential exempt employees. The last amendment, uh, to these, uh, terms and conditions were done, uh, in two thousand and fourteen, and there have been some items that were previously negotiated with the Classified Employees Association, um, that were also extended to the, both groups, the executive management and confidential exempt. Uh, the amendments to the, uh, terms and conditions of employment just memorializes those, uh, processes. And those are, uh, updating the, uh, PEMPCA, which is the, uh, CalPERS Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act. Each year, that amount gets, um, is amended, and when we update the TCEs or any MOUs, we try to keep that updated so that it's, that it's current. Um, as mentioned, in two thousand and sixteen, the City Council adopted the Classification Employ, Classified Employees Association MOU, which negotiated a longevity pay incentive, at that time, it was extended to executive, uh, management and confidential exempt groups. Uh, however, the process is, was in effect, it just was not memorialized. This, um, uh, amendment will add it to the, uh, TCE so that it now becomes, um, uh, memorialized in the document. We also have in the report, uh, the retiree medical insurance. Um, we are asking that, uh, uh, it, it came to our attention, uh, Government Code seventy-five oh seven, there is an actuarial review process that has to be conducted. Uh, we've been in contact with CalPERS and also our actuarial, uh, company that is looking at this, and we have a meeting scheduled for, with them tomorrow. So in terms of adopting the terms and conditions of employment for confidential exempt and executive management, uh, that item will be, uh, we're asking, recommending that the item not be adopted, uh, at this time. We will have, we will bring that item back at a future date. And the last item on the, uh, terms and conditions of employment is updating language, uh, so that it matches the current, uh, salary matrix for executive management, and that's, uh, the removal of the police captain, which was moved into a confidential exempt group, and then adding the deputy city manager, which was a new position that was adopted, uh, recently. Uh, and the, uh, and adding the, uh, four-ten schedule for a public safety, uh, uh, holiday leave that only impacts the police and fire chiefs. Uh, currently, the, the only item on there is, is the nine-eighty schedule, uh, our current fire chief and police chief work a four-ten schedule, and this just, uh, aligns that, uh, the use of the public safety holiday leave to be, uh, uh, in line with the current schedule that they have. So basically, the terms and conditions of employment will have two tiers, the nine-eighty schedule and the four-ten schedule. And, um, that concludes the, my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Question?
Um, I have a question, so I am, in recent, I've been following other cities as well, and, and they've been adopting, um, uh, there's also been state level for, um, uh, accommodating dispatchers as, as first responders as well. So does, um, the amendment to the holiday leave language also include our dispatchers? Are they considered public safety?
Yes.
Councilmember Parkers, do you have any questions?
So, most of this is with the, um, uh, the police union, but we do have a couple of other cleanup things, is that right? That's what the TCEs are, is, is to get some of the CalPERS stuff and, and the titles for the deputy city manager? Is that, is that an accurate assessment of that?
That is correct, uh, Councilmember Parkhurst.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I want to make sure I understand the, uh, holiday leave, um, portion, just so I have an understanding of it. Um, it's, I think it's a hundred and four hours a year, is that correct?
Are, are you referring to the, uh, the, the MOU or the terms and conditions of employment?
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the retirement.
Okay.
To have an understanding, so if anybody retires, there's no proration, they get the, the whole hundred and four hours? Or even if it's like one day into the new fiscal year, how, how's that work?
That, that is correct, so currently, uh, at the end of each fiscal year, it is automatically cashed out. Whatever balance is in the public safety holiday leave is cashed out. At the beginning of the new fiscal year, they, uh, will, uh,
Accrue it throughout the year, right?
Accrue another hundred and four hours for that, for the, that fiscal year. What this, uh, changes is if, if we have a, a member of the Police Association that is getting ready to retire, it'll allow them to cash out the hundred and four hours, uh, or whatever balance they have, at the time that they set their retirement. And it won't restrict them to have to wait a, a full year, uh, at the end of the fiscal year to retire. So if they decide to retire at the end of the year, they'll be able to cash that out, the balance out at that time.
So, so conceivably, somebody retires on, uh, on July thirty-first, it would be one-twelfth of the hundred and four hours. It's not the whole hundred and four hours.
Current.
And they, because they had, normally they'd have to wait to get cashed out.
Right.
Um, but they can cash out that one month of accrual, uh, at that time, is that what?
So if, if, uh, if, at the beginning of the fiscal year, when they accrued the hundred and four hours, if they decide to retire at the end of, uh, July, they would be able to, uh, cash out the full balance without it being prorated. As it currently is right now, they, it would be prorated.
So you're saying, you're saying the, the full one four, one oh four is granted at the beginning of each fiscal year, not, it's just a cliff vesting, it's not accrued over, over time, over, over, per, per pay period?
Yes, it's all accrued at one time at the beginning of the fiscal year.
That's a nice benefit.
And, and I guess it's, it's sort of embedded in this is the notion that if you're not employed at the end of the year, you don't get the payout, is that, is it sort of, you have to be employed to get the payout? And that's why the, that, that an early retiree would forego, or they just have to wait until the end of the year to get the payment?
Well, it, the way it works with, when, uh, when someone's retiring, there's certain dates that they retire. If you retire at the end of the year, there's a, uh, cost of living, uh, adjustment that occurs with CalPERS, which most of the time, you see a lot of retirements at the end of the year, at the end of the calendar year. The fiscal year that we have right now that is cashed out, the hundred and four hours is cashed out, if a, if a retiree, or if a, an employee is getting ready to retire, they would have to sort of plan their retirement around May, some, maybe even June, to be able to cash out the balance of their public safety holiday leave at that time, rather than, uh, at the end of the calendar year.
So I guess my guess, question is, are they becoming ineligible to cash out the remainder in their vacation? Or are they just, is it just a timing issue as to when they actually get the amount? Like, if, if you do not retire at the end of the year when this is cashed out, are you foregoing that benefit? Or is it just a matter of having to wait the amount of time from when you retire to the end of the fiscal year to get that cash out?
It's mostly awaiting, it, it, they would have to wait.
So I, I'm, I'm assuming, um, we want to disincentivize somebody from taking, basically, I'm going to retire, I want to take a hundred and four hours and just take it all now, and then we would have to backfill with overtime and all those issues. So it, I think at the end of the, end of the day, it's, yes, it's a kind of a nice benefit to have, but also for the staff that's, that's left behind with the retiree.
Right.
Uh, they're not, the, I, I can see an incentive to be like, if I don't get it, I'm just going to take a hundred and four hours off and just,
Essentially, that could happen.
Take it, right? So I'm not saying that's bad or good, I'm saying it, there's incentive to do that, and if, I would probably do that.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, no, I, I, I can see the reasoning behind it, um, for, for that, that portion, especially since we have a small department. I think, I think that's, um, an extra benefit, and if you just leave, you don't get it, you have to actually do a CalPERS retirement.
Right, but, but it's not that you don't get it, you just don't get it when you leave, you get it later.
No, you don't get it.
So, so current, currently, if, uh, if a member of the Police Association resigns from the department, not retiring, resigns, they will receive whatever balance is in their, or actually, uh, they will receive a prorated amount. So if, if we, if we get in a, a accrual at, at the beginning of the fiscal year, and by September they resign, they will only get cashed out whatever, from July first to September.
That, that I get, so, but in the retirement, this is what I was asking before, in the retirement, uh, situation, this is sort of what I was asking, like, do they have to actually work the entire year to get the payout at the end of the year of the balance of their vacation? Or if they retire, you know, not, not resign, retire before the end of the year, they will get cashed out for the same amount? It's just, they won't receive it on the day that they retire, they'll receive it on the payout day at the end of the year? Or do they give it up, they just don't get that value?
No, they, they, so if, if we have a member who was going to get ready to retire, if they retire, let's say, November thirtieth, they will receive the full balance of their public safety holiday leave at that time. So their final check will include the full balance of the public safety holiday leave. Rather than a prorated amount, it would be the full balance. So if they have a hundred and four hours there and they haven't used any, they would receive a hundred and four. Or if they've used some, and now it's, you know, down to, uh, eighty hours, they would get cashed out the eighty hours. So it depends on what the balance is.
It seems to me the incentive is to, is to, is to retire on the first day of the new fiscal year.
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah, or at the end of the, uh, year, if they decide to retire December twenty-ninth, or last day of work is December twenty-ninth, and December thirtieth is the retirement date, they would then get that cashed out at that time, uh, rather than having to wait until Ju-, uh, May or June of next year to get the, most of that cashed out.
So I want to make sure I understand, and I think you cleared it up, um, currently, if somebody either retires or, um, separates employment, they will have a cash out of the prorated amount.
Correct.
And now it is, if you, if you retire, CalPERS retirement, you will get the hu, the, the whole one hundred and four hours at that point in time, regardless of when during the year you do this.
That is correct.
Minus what you view.
It would be the balance of the public safety holiday leave at the time.
So if they use none, then it's a hundred and four.
It's a hundred and four. It's 104.
And that's persible?
It is a persible item, which in, in, in essence, is a benefit to the retiree or the soon-to-be retiree. And, you know, it, so it's, it's a, it's a nice little benefit for someone who's service retiring from the city.
And we're, are we typically high 36 or high 12? Probably more high 36 than high 12 for final average compensation?
It's the last three, the three years, 36.
High 36, okay.
Mayor, if I may add, so Assistant City Manager talked about the incentive to retire before the start of the year. So, what this does is, is it allows them to retire at the end of the year, cash out their hours. If they were to wait beyond the year, then they have to wait a year and a half before CalPERS will give them a, a cost of living adjustment. So, there is an incentive to retire November, December, because their cost of living from CalPERS comes sooner as opposed to if they wait till after January, then they have to wait that whole year plus the, the, the time for the cost of living adjustment to take place. So, it's not so much a concern that somebody's going to cash their hours out June or, 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 I'm sorry, July or August. It's that they want to be able to retire in November and December and, and cash out the full balance.
Yeah, I, I get it. And, yeah, and there's also your service credit years, your service credit that plays into the date you decided to retire too. So, I mean, it's not just that. If, there's really not an incentive, if you're only getting one month of service credit or, you know, a part, or a partial year, you might want to wait anyway to get a full, depending on where you are on, on the service credit matrix, right? So, no, I understand. I, I'm fine with that. I think it's a good benefit for our retirees. Because at the end of the day, even if it is persible, it's, it's only liquidated, it's, it's diluted to 1/36 of, of, one of the 36 months. So, it's not that much of a bump, but it's enough, it's a nice going away present, retirement present, so, if, if they take advantage of it that way. So, no, I'm fine with it. Okay, thank you.
I have a question related to the TCEs that are attached to the MOU. Or not attached, separate, correct? Because there is, their MOU is separate, and this is just under the same resolution?
Report, yes.
Okay. So, on item four, bullet point four, it says, "Other items being proposed for the change in executive management, TCE is adding deputy city manager's position and removing the police captain's position." And we said this is, we're doing this to match our salary matrix. Does that mean that the salary of the deputy city manager is increasing? Or is it, what is, what are we matching?
No, yeah, good, good question. This doesn't have any impact on salaries. What's been adopted in, a year ago for, when we added the deputy city manager position, will remain. The salary matrix has already been adopted, that will remain as, as is. The TCEs is just updating language that the deputy city manager, because it's a newer position, it's not included in the Terms and Conditions of Employment. We're just amending that so that now it does include it. And also, the police captain still exists. It was just moved to the classified, I'm sorry, the confidential exempt group.
Not executive.
And not executive. So, the salary matrix already reflects that. It's just, this has been sitting on my queue for quite some time to get updated. Same thing with the longevity pay that's in practice is just now being memorialized. And since we're updating the Terms and Conditions of Employment, I, we, I've found a few things that needed to be updated as well to reflect the current, the salary matrix that we have in the positions that we currently have on file.
Thank you.
And can you confirm for me, once again, that when we approved the 2023, 2024 budget, we already approved a 7% pay increase to our police officers? And so, this is basically reflecting, for first year at least, what we've already approved in the, in the budget?
Yeah, so, when we started our budget discussions in anticipation of negotiating with the police association and as well as the other groups as well, the Classified Employees Association, we projected cost of living adjustments. And not knowing how the negotiations, negotiations were going to go, that was a safe number to use. It could have been less, and then the other percentages could have been absorbed through the second item that was negotiated, or it could have been more. And so, it, 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 it came down to the, what we agreed on when we met and conferred with our police association. But yes, it was budgeted in anticipation of negotiations with the police association.
Thank you. Any more questions for Assistant?
To clarify that, that would, that would cover the 7% cost of living increase, but there is an added impact to the budget that was not part of the budget for the other benefits that were negotiated, right?
For the other benefit, which is the education incentive, that, that increased the budget about 40, 40 to 45 thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Good point, thank you. Any other questions for our Assistant City Manager? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's bring it to the-
Public.
Public, that are all employees, for public comment. They are still public, yes. Madam City Clerk, have we received any comment cards?
There are no speaker cards, no, no one in the queue for the Zoom meeting, and also no emails received.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for discussion and a motion.
I'll go first.
Yes, please.
I like it, I mean, it's good. If we, if we can afford it, it looks like we can, at least for the time being. It seems like win-win for everyone. I like the fact that our offices are trying to keep up with inflation here at least. You know, it's, it's a tough, a tough road to hoe, because it's, it's tough out there. And these are very valuable people to us, and we want, I want them to know that. So, I'm happy to support this. And yeah, the, the 104 hours is a sweet deal. Good for you guys. I'm happy to, happy to provide it for you. You're doing a great job.
Well, obviously, I, I love public safety, and it's one of my, my favorite departments. And I think that we have such amazing quality officers in our city that work so hard and, and especially make that personal touch with our, with our customers and our clients, and not everyone in town, and, and our business sector as well lately, and our residents. And so, I think this is fair for what we can afford now moving forward. I know we're going to have to find some remedies to help, help make this possible for our future for, for all of our departments. And I, I commend you guys for working this out. I know it took a long time, so I appreciate all the hard work you guys do.
I can't say anything better than everything that's already been said. I mean, I think this council has a pretty good history of supporting, you know, not just our public safety, but all of our employees in terms of the, the bargaining negotiations. And I, you know, I don't, this, this is to me just sort of a continuation of that same philosophy that, you know, we try to do what we can to provide the best for our employees because they are our number one asset. And so, you know, as we, as everyone knows, we have revenue constraints, and so, we do what we can, and we hope that we provide other benefits that, that make it attractive to live in our city. But we are very cognizant of the fact that when push comes to shove, some folks need more, you know, more compensation. And sometimes we can, and sometimes we can't provide that. So, I, when we can, I'm fully supportive because, you know, we're always paying a little bit of catch-up with our, with our neighbors, and they have no problem recruiting our folks. So, I'm happy to, to, to make it a little bit nicer to work here.
Thank you. Councilmember Parkhurst, do you have anything to add?
I just want to thank the police union for working so hard on this, for working through it. I think this is, it's a good deal abroad. Would like to thank Assistant City Manager, for trying to clean up everything in the, in the document or in our, in our, in our, so I, I think this is a very good deal, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of it.
Yeah, I, again, hard to add anything to that. But, you know, to everybody's point, we, we have this department who we're trying to get closer and closer to where they ought to be paid with, with parity on our comparables, and we're, we're getting there. Thank you for your patience, thank you for the negotiations. We have a wonderful department that, you know, we're an F set now, and we, we have this drone program, and we, we're, we're part of all these, these other organizations, you know, with car theft and, and everything. And they tend, they, they keep amazes me with, with what they do. Chief's philosophy of holding everybody accountable, yet letting them kind of spread their wings and, and learn more and get more involved is amazing. I'll tell you, the State of the City address, I think the only applause I got was when I gave the numbers and the fact that everybody, all the suspects were apprehended in all these, these major crimes. I think that was the only applause in the whole State of the City, and that was, that was the police officer slide. So, your, your residents appreciate your hard work. We appreciate your hard work. And yes, we do have constraints. And within those constraints, we try to do what we can. And thank you for your patience, and we know more needs to be done. But we're behind you, and we support you, and the residents support you. So, thank you for your patience, and hopefully, we'll get this thing approved. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the, let me go to the item number, approve the consideration of adopt, of Resolution 2369, approving a development agreement for the, oops, I'm reading the wrong one. Considering a Resolution 2370, adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Sierra Madre and the Police Association, and Resolution 2371, amending the classification plan and salary matrix for executive management and confidential exempt employees.
We have a motion? We have a second. All those, roll call votes, sorry.
Mayor, mayor, can we clarify that that resolution does not include-
Yeah, I'd like to point out the bullet point number three, which is respect to retiree medical. To not include that in the adoption, we will bring that at a later date. There's some, more work we have to do on that section.
Just throw a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment will work out.
What do you want, what do you want to do procedurally, Laura? Madam City Clerk? Oh, it wasn't adopted, so we can amend the-
It wasn't.
Should we re, should we remotion? Why don't you remotion?
Restate, let me remotion.
So, there is, for clarification, there is no vote, so you may amend your motion, and then we will need a second to your amended motion.
All right. I make a motion that we, consideration of, we approve the Resolution 2370, adopting the MOU between the City of Sierra Madre and the Police Association, and also Resolution 2371, amending the classification plan and salary matrix, and adopting the amendments to the Terms of the Conditions of Employment for executive management and confidential exempt employees excluding bullet point three of the proposed amendments to the TCE, which is respect to retiree medical insurance.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst. Madam, I got this right this time. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Howe, is your vote?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kelly-Crebs?
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember Christine Lowe?
Aye.
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, we have a unanimous vote in approval of both Resolutions 2370 and 2371, 2371 without bullet point number three.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Do we have any ideas for future agenda items?
I do.
Please.
And I, I know it's a, it's a controversial one. I'm not saying what my position would be, but I think we should have the discussion. I'd like to reconsider expanding the planning commission to seven seats. Like to see if we could have a discussion about that. We're, we're having issues gaining, getting quorums, and it seems like that's too important to at least not consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss.
I would like to also look at the, I don't know if this would come up with the traffic plan that came from Berkeley, the report, but I've heard some citizens need crosswalks on Baldwin by each school. I think there's just one at, at St. Rita's, not at Gooden School. And we've had some traffic issues, and we've resolved those, but there's not a crosswalk going across Baldwin at Gooden School. Nope. There is on-
On Laurel.
On Laurel, but not on Baldwin. And also, it's come up again, the almost hits at Sunnyside and Mariposa. The resident has, again, voiced a concern, and I've asked them to come forward also.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We discussed it before when we brought the, the crosswalk to Mountain Trail and Orange Grove, and we talked about the need for one, especially with Alverno having more traffic coming down, and there's not a stop, four-way stop. So, what happens is people go there, and then people are flying through.
I just sit there in her yard and watch it happen.
Yeah.
Is, are you asking for an agenda item or to direct staff to-
A report.
Okay.
Analysis.
This is for, this is for crosswalks at two locations, Baldwin?
There is already, there's just one location, just at Baldwin, going across Baldwin at Laurel.
There is a crosswalk there.
There's, there is one on Laurel, but not on Baldwin.
Well, flashing light is what, no, there is a crosswalk there. I, I walked down- There is a crosswalk.
Yeah.
I've, and there is a, there's a handy, there's a ramp.
There's not a light.
There's not a light.
Or a stop sign.
On the, on the south, south side of, the south side of Laurel at Baldwin, there is a crosswalk, yes.
But no stop sign.
It is hard to be seen if you're on the east side because of the oak trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've driven through there, and I just wonder, is not a crosswalk on Baldwin?
I, I've used it many times.
Yeah.
And a flashing light, do you call me just like, just like St. Rita's has?
Is there a fit?
There is no flashing light, and there is no stop sign. There's just a crosswalk.
There's no flashing light, there's no stop sign.
Is there?
Okay. And then the four-way stop consideration at Sunnyside and Mariposa.
So, so Sunnyside, Mariposa's not crosswalk, that's a four-way stop.
That's a four-way stop.
Yeah, that's scary.
Yeah.
Well, it's like one of them is, and then one of them, like, it's like, there's one that is and one that isn't a four-way stop.
Thank you. Any, any other items? Do you need clarification?
I do need clarification for the item related to the Macover Cabin. And I just need to make sure I have direction to seek third-party historical assessment to determine if the cabin can be relocated in its entirety or what percentage, something to that extent.
I think any, any type of analysis on what can be done, and maybe, you know, what's, if there's different options, what are the, the costs involved with that?
The net impact, the net impact is a, is a restored building or a preserved building rather than a reconstructed or replica building.
Replica, yeah. I think reconstructed's okay, but replica's not.
Sure.
Yeah, or not-
Replica-
Is what it is.
Dominantly replica.
I mean, we just need to know what's possible, I think, is really. I mean, I don't think we need to give them parameters. I think we just want to know, like, given the state of the current, the current state of the building, like, what are the, what are the, what's the range of possibility? Both, I guess, both for-
Oh, go ahead.
Including a, a historical preservation expert and not someone that deals with historical buildings? I'm not convinced that you've got someone with that expertise in there. And I'd also like to make sure that we put in the Historical Preservation Society into the discussions and make sure we get, because they'll be those who background and have some really valuable comments tonight. And I want to make sure that we incorporate.
I was just going to say, I think that, and I think the option should be both with respect to remaining as where it is and then also with relocation, right? Because it might be that they can do a better job of restoration if they leave it there versus, you know, versus a replica is all that's possible if we move it, right? Because I could, I could see a, I could see a different treatment depending on its location. You know, a different range of possibilities depending on its location.
And my understanding, and I'll, I'll get clarification from the developer, is that if it remains in place, it's most likely going to be a replica.
Right, because if it remains in place, that we don't have any sway. I still think it would be worth having, I mean, unless, unless it vastly increases the cost of the analysis, I still think it would be worth knowing kind of whether, whether there's a broader range of possibilities on site versus relocation.
And it seemed like they're amenable to a plaque, and I don't know if that needs to go through the planning commission. I think there needs to be some memorial, memorialization at that site regarding the, the cabin and the-
Even if it stays?
I think even if it stays, yeah, I think so. Are we good on direction? All right, just as a reminder, we are dark, the second meeting of, of this month, and we will reconvene the first, or the second Tuesday of, of December. With that, entertain a motion. Thank you.
Second.
All those, ah, we don't, yeah, let's just do a roll call, right? All those, uh, we don't, yeah, let's just do a roll call, right?
Suggested, right?
Thank you.
The motion was made by...
Me.
Thank you.
Second by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, how do you vote to adjourn this evening?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Councilmember Goss?
Aye.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Parkhurst, how do you vote to adjourn? Thank you, sir.
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Councilmember Parkhurst, for, for sticking with us.
Feel better?